Good evening. Welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. Today is November 7, 2023, and it is 7 o'clock. My name is Rosario Diaz, and I am your Centennial Mayor. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Samuel Martinez from Amazing Love Ministries, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here this evening. We thank you so much for the freedoms that we enjoy and the peace that we enjoy, Father, in our land. And, Father, with so much going on in this world, Father, conflicts and wars, we thank you, Father, that everything is important to you, and that even as we gather here to discuss the affairs of our city, you are here with us. It is one of our founding fathers who said, "It is God that governs in the affairs of man." And King Solomon said, "As we acknowledge you, you direct our paths." So we ask you for wisdom for our elected officials and all those that are employed in the city. Father, we ask that you guide us in the affairs and the discussions of those things that we're going to go over, Father. Father, we thank you and we praise you for protecting our police officers and our first responders. We call our schools safe havens. And, Father, we thank you, Father, for peace in our neighborhoods. We thank you for the work that you're doing in our city. And we remember the words of St. Francis of Assisi. "Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us sow love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; and where there is sadness, joy." God bless America, and God bless our beloved city of West Covina.
Amen. Men, please remove your caps and follow my lead and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilman Cantos.
Here.
Councilman Wu.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Here.
Mayor Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Prochance Batzabai is absent this evening.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of our closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Erin Shoroma, Superintendent Principal of San Jose Charter Academy. Testing, testing. Scared. Testing. You can hear me?
Oh.
They're speaking into this mic. Hello? Okay. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence, of their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing an entry or flying overhead is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
It's a pleasure to work with residents and students from West Covina. Having the opportunity to work at the school for 26 years now, I think we continue to grow, and I hope that we are positively contributing to West Covina. I do want to recognize two of our board members who are able to be here tonight, Mr. Matt Smith and Mr. Tony Song and former Superintendent Dr. Denise Patton. The work we do with some of my administrative team, Ms. Mary Spickler and Ms. Marixsa Gomez, is something we do, and it's a passion we serve. I want to recognize some of our staff who've been here, who were able to come here tonight, our counselors who provide for our students to ensure a well-rounded school experience every day. I want to thank the city for recognizing us. Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Thank you for being here. I am going to call you back up as soon as we get that certificate. So if you can, please take a seat, and I'll call you back up. Okay, next. I'd like to invite Chief Capelli up here. Chief Capelli is going to present the Fire Prevention Week poster contest winner. That'll be exciting.
Thank you, Mayor Diaz. Appreciate it. Can I please have Allison Lee of Vine Elementary up here? And Principal... Can you hear me? And Principal Leveque as well. I haven't seen you in hours, huh? So, come on, stand right here. So, tonight, we are going to be honoring Allison and Vine Elementary with this year's Fire Prevention Week poster contest winner. So, every year, the Fire Prevention Week in the United States, we have a theme. This year's theme was Cooking Safety Starts With You: Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. And Allison created the winning poster. We had seven schools that participated in this year's poster contest. We had Ornnwood Elementary, Merlinda Elementary, Cameron Elementary, California Elementary, Monte Vista Elementary, Merced, and Vine. And I will say that Merced and Vine battle over this contest, by the way. So this is our sixth year that we've done this. What we do is, at the beginning of the year, we go to the schools, we give them the theme, and we went to 14 schools and asked them to participate. Like I said, seven participated. And we asked their third, fourth, and fifth graders to develop posters that we can vote on at our Fire Prevention Week in October. They decide which ones come to us for voting, and, like I said, this year Allison won. And we put up the posters at our Fire Prevention Week, and the people got to vote who came to our Fire Prevention Week at Station 2. And, like I said, Allison's won. Allison won. If you can come on up here, AJ and Marissa from our Fire Prevention Bureau. This is a plaque that will be hung in Vine Elementary for the next year. By the way, this is Vine's third year winning in a row. Principal Leveque gets to take this to the principal's meeting at the beginning of the year and show it off and flaunt it to the other principals, saying that she won. We went to the school today, and we gave out some other certificates to some of the other students, and as well, we showed the school the plaque. And Principal Leveque got to do a little firefighting on our apparatus today, which is probably on some social media somewhere. So we have some certificates for you here.
Well, on behalf of the city of West Covina, we have a certificate to recognize Allison Lee in celebration of Fire Prevention Week Contest Winner, November 7. There you go. And also, we have a certificate of recognition for Glenda Leveque, Vine Elementary School Principal, in celebration of Fire Prevention Week. Congratulations.
It took me three years to get it right, so I think I finally have got it right. I want to add that the poster was laminated, and it has a magnet on the back, and is on Quint 2, and it will be running around Station 2's district for the next month on there. Allison and her family also get to have dinner at Fire Station 2 at some time to be determined. We will also be picking her up and giving her a ride to Vine Elementary. So as we progress this and learn more things we can do to honor students, and we like to have our... We have a really good partnership, West Covina and Vine School District and our other school districts, and we just learn more what we can do. So we'd like to take some pictures.
Is she going to go on the plant? Is she going to run on the plant?
Yes. Yes, she will. We also have a goodies for her. All right.
Okay, now I'd like to call over Karen Cole. Karen Cole is an Economic Development Project Coordinator, and she... We have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 25, 2023.
Thank you, Mary Diaz. The city is pleased to announce that we will be participating in Small Business Saturday this year for the sixth time. And as the mayor said, it is going to be on November 25, 2023. Small Business Saturday was started by American Express to help promote and support small businesses throughout the United States. Small Business Saturday does not only seek participation from businesses to promote them, but also encourages residents to shop local and shop small. Small Business Saturday, the city is putting together... Has put together the Small Business Saturday to encourage our small businesses to participate. In return, the city will promote our small businesses on our website and our social media platform, and residents can participate by shopping at these... Participating in small businesses and spreading the word. So we encourage... The city encourages you all to remember to shop small, shop local, shop West Covina this holiday season and all year round.
Would you like to say a few words?
Shop small and shop on Small Business Saturday.
Thank you. Okay, here's this proclamation. That is, now I therefore, I, Rosario Diaz, Mayor of City of West Covina, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 25, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, American Day, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday throughout the year. Okay, now I'd like to invite Luis Portillo, President and CEO of the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership.
So first of all, thank you to the mayor of the council for allowing me this opportunity here and coming to talk to you about the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership, why I think that the city should become more active and engaged with it. I do have a brief presentation. I'm not sure if they're able to bring that up.
Just a moment.
No problem.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yep, that's it. So if we can start it up on the next slide. The partnership was actually created in 1991. It was actually the brainchild of three city managers from the cities of Alhambra, Monrovia, and West Covina. And the idea was that we needed a central kind of organization who can advocate on behalf of the region, really work on issues of economic development. And so, working with some private sector business leaders, they were able to create the partnership, and it's existed ever since then. Its mission has grown over the years, but overall, we really work to advance economic vitality of the region. How do we create opportunities? We do that through advocacy. We do that through working with cities, businesses, and organizations, and how do we engage more economic development? Next slide. So the San Gabriel Valley extends from the west side, from La Cuenyada Flint Ridge on the way to the north, to Monterey Park, Monobello, all the way out to the county line in Claremont and Pomona. Next slide. It's a region, we have seen some slight decreases in population. We peaked in 2019 at almost 1.9 million residents. We've seen a decline about to 8.1.85 million since then, and we're projecting that we will be getting another decline by 2028. But still, it's one of the most diverse regions in the state. About half of our population is Latino. About 30% are Asian, about roughly 17% white, 3% black, and others are 2%. So it is one of the probably the more diverse regions in the state. From an employment sector, if you want to go to the next slide, the single biggest region we have is employment sector is going to be healthcare. That's the single biggest employer in our area, and it's one of the few that, while they did see a massive dip during the reset during the pandemic, it has recovered, not just jobs it lost, but it's increased significantly since then. One of the major ones that hasn't been seen a really restoration to its previous former level is hospitality. Next slide. And as we talk about, you know, small businesses, this is kind of gives you the sense of what the small business... Who makes up the small businesses in the state of California? So, not the state of California, but the valley, the county, and the state. And almost 90% are going to be businesses with 10 employees or less. So it's really that critical mark of who makes up the employers in the state. Keep going forward. Next one. And then from the partnership overview, this kind of gives you a sense of kind of who makes up the partnership. So it's really, sometimes you think it is kind of solely businesses. No, we have a lot of businesses and representatives, but we also have a vast majority of the cities in the San Gabriel Valley are members. Chambers of Commerce, government agencies, educational institutions, nonprofit organizations, and other associations that make up the partnership. If you go on the next slide, gives you a sense of who sits on the Board of Directors. So from banking institutions like Bank of America to educational institutions like Cal Poly Pomona, Fairplex, AT&amp;T, and even some cities as well. So it kind of gives you the sense of a pretty broad makeup of different businesses that really start the valley. Next slide. And the way primarily it's organized, we have our Board of Directors, then we have a number of committees that we use to do a lot of our work, and I can go into those. Next slide. Whether it's issues related to workforce development, economic development, and advocacy, and some of these are, you know, helpful, meant to be tailored for cities to be able to do some of the work. Go on to the next slide. Keep going. Next one. So advocacy is going to be a pretty big part. We support a lot of our cities who are oftentimes trying to get funding from the federals or state governments, and their requests for proposals really going up. We do an advocacy trip in Sacramento on behalf of not just the business or issues, but the region itself. How do we make sure that our representatives are hearing from us to make sure that we can kind of help them, support them as they're pushing to get more efforts back? If you want to go to the next slide? Keep going. Okay, next one. And then, economic development, we recently restarted this up. This is kind of our main vehicle to connect our cities and our private sector members. This has kind of evolved, though, since it began. As a place for a lot of our city representatives who are members, found that there was a value in having a forum where they can talk to other colleagues who work on economic development to try to share ideas, look at what works, what's been done. We had just our last session, last time was on the Surplus Land Act, and how that's impacting cities, different ways that they can go about to making sure that their proposals will be successful. And then looking at kind of best practices, what can we do? What are some cities doing that could be copied and mimicked at other cities as well? That committee is chaired by Arminé Chaparian, who is the city manager for South Pasadena, and Ken Lee, who's the Vice President for Development at Pacific Plaza Premier Development Group. Next slide. Keep going. And then, keep going, work first of all. And then also, the next major one is, we hear a lot from our employers, from different businesses, it's a hard time finding staff. It's a hard time finding people to bring on. And not just that, but also facing a wave of retirements of folks that were going to be losing a lot of institutional knowledge. And so we've really been trying to work on, how do we engage more of our educational institutions, educational partners, and connect them with our local employers to make sure that they're getting a workforce that's trained and meeting their needs? We have our committees chaired by Salvatorez Cuomo, who's the Vice President for Economic and Workforce Development at Pasadena City College, and Angela Bernanke, who's the Chief People Officer at Eminate Health. And through that, efforts, we also work with the K-12 Foothill Consortium, if you want to go to the next slide, to do a kind of internship program for those schools. So those are Monrovia Unified School District, Duarte, Charter Oak, and A Souza Unified School Districts, and put together a whole host of kind of internship program for their college... Their high school students, they're actually going to be traveling next month to Fresno to go see the high-speed rail as it's being built, to kind of, for those students who have an interest in engineering, so they can kind of see firsthand on the type of work that's being done. So that's the kind of work that we're doing at the partnership. It's kind of, I wanted to kind of touch on it briefly. Again, so it's, we're made up of, again, the cities are a large component of it. West Covina is one of those critical sectors, critical cities, is one of the largest cities in the San Gabriel Valley. It's important, is really, it's had major importance to the valley, and it's somebody I think that we would benefit, but also to have as part of the partnership, but also, I think, somebody that would benefit from the work we're doing there. So I wanted to come and talk to you about it, for those who may not be familiar with it, and see if you have any questions, and we'd love to have you rejoin again.
Any questions? Councilman Cantos.
Hi there, Mr. Portillo. It's good to see you again.
Same here.
I wanted to ask, at an operational level, do you already have the list of our West Covina businesses, and how do you already engage with our folks? Or what should we be doing proactively to connect our businesses with these efforts? Let's say, are there any job fairs that are coming up that we should have our businesses participate in and invite residents who are job seekers? Can you tell us at an operational level what precisely we can do, so that way we can have some next action steps that we can work on together?
Yeah, definitely. One of the things we're starting to do, what we do already is, we have what's known as our power site, and that has information for all vacant business properties throughout the San Gabriel Valley. So if you ever want to... So if you're talking to a business, somebody who is thinking about locating to the region, and we can kind of go through, essentially, say, you're looking, how much space you need? You need 5,000 square foot warehouse space, or you need a manufacturing, or you need, you know, retail space. We have that looked up, so you can see every single property that's available now to help you get connected. We also work with LA EDC, Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. We work with them, and we have one of the folks who really targets, goes out and visits small businesses throughout the San Gabriel Valley. One, just to touch base with them. Like, what is it, or is there anything we could be doing more that you need help on? Informing them about grants, different services that are available that could be of help to them? That's something we're really trying to touch base on. One of the things we always advise a lot of our cities is, you know, and I think most of you get the list, which is, here are your top 10 employers from a revenue account for the city, from a employee count, and making sure that, are we hearing? Because, you know, we hear sometimes, when we visit with some of these businesses, we hear from them that they're getting called from Oregon, calls from Texas to try to move over there. And so oftentimes, they have connections to the region, they don't want to leave, they have family, they have friends. And so, but to the extent that we can be proactive in making sure that, hey, they're hearing, they're getting kind of tempted, what can we do to help them to make sure we're making it as easier for them? Those are some of the types of things we've seen that kind of people really appreciate.
Oh, good, good. So if you could reach out to me subsequent to this meeting, I have some thoughts that we... I'd love to get to touch base with you for some concrete action.
Okay, definitely will do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
I saw on your K-12 list, I didn't see West Covina, any of the schools. Is there a reason why none of the schools in West Covina is part of that K-12?
Yeah, it's a K-12 Foothill Consortium. It's essentially kind of a joint agreement that was, came up with those four school districts, so Monrovia, Duarte, Charter Oak, and A Souza. We are looking to do more work. We actually, one of our members, Union Pacific, has really expressed an interest in wanting to do economic development, or I mean, workforce development along for the cities along the 60 corridor, but really kind of tie it... They're not asking that, hey, we want all these people to just come to work at Union Pacific. They're like, you know, we want to expose them to all the whole region, so whether it's healthcare, whether it's telecommunications, whether it's transportation, whatever it may be. And so, we're looking to do some kind of, some of those connections with some of the districts along the corridor, whether the 60, to see what we can do, because I think there's a lot more employers who really want to get more engaged, specifically with the K-12 system, to get those students involved early, especially, you know, to the extent that there may be opportunities to get them trained, so that when they graduate, they have an easier time transitioning, whether to either to a apprenticeship, a job opportunity, or different training programs, so they can feed those needs right away. But I think there's definitely a desire from the membership to do more along the cities the south of the valley, because there is that sense that the north of the valley gets a lot of the attention, and we need to make sure that we are touching all the different regions.
Is that similar to like the ROP program that we used to have many years ago, that Regional Operation Program?
Yeah. I think it's still active, but so it's one of those areas where I think that you have the private sector who's willing to step up and kind of say, hey, what do we need for those four districts we mentioned? We do actually, we got a grant from them where we, essentially, they'll provide us some financial support, and we essentially run that whole program for them. So we have staff who are dedicated solely to workforce development, and we're able to work with the districts to say, here's how we can get it. And they've been really pleased, because we target those students, not just, it's each student's ask, kind of, what area are you interested in? So if some student says, I want to do healthcare, we'll place them in an internship with a healthcare. So it could be City of Hope, it could be Kaiser, it could be Eminate. If somebody says, I want to do engineering work, or I want to do programming work, we try to place them in the fields in which they've expressed an interest. So not just any placement, but something that's really tied to what they want to do.
Okay. I just really want to see our students participate, and obviously, we have one school here from San Jose Charter, which my son went to many years ago, but I'd like to see if we can add or if you can partner even with the, like, the West Covina Unified School District to be part of that program. I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and so, like I said, I think we have some more members who want to do something, so we're going to be doing outreach to you. How do we engage these communities?
Okay, perfect.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, nice to see you again. I think the issue you overhear, so we are the original founder, but currently, I don't think we are the member.
No, no.
So anything, unless we join a member, then we can get a benefit. And that's what I want to ask, because the membership is, the fee is one issue, and the fee we pay, can we get a benefit? What kind of benefit West Covina can get to our way, the fee we have to pay you? I know all the city will pay the fee.
Yeah.
But we need to know, okay, how, what kind of benefit we can get? For example, how many businesses we can promote, what kind of lobby we can go to Sacramento or DC and try to get business or funding to our region? So can you kind of help us? What kind of benefit, let you try to persuade us, go back, okay, and join the membership again?
Yeah, no, definitely. And so it really varies kind of what your interests are. Some cities are interested in economic development, some are more interested in advocacy. I think we'd work with you to look at where you want us to focus to be. So if, let's say, you want us to engage with a lot of your local businesses, reaching out to them, doing that. One of the things we recently restarted is, it's a Chinese Leadership Roundtable, and we're really targeting small businesses in the Chinese community. How do we get them more engaged, more active, and show them all different services? And we often do this before the pandemic, where we'd have them go around, somebody from our staff, somebody from the chamber, somebody from the city, and kind of just visit different cities, different businesses, and kind of talk to them here kind of firsthand, hey, what can we do to help? How is everything going? Share information with them about it. If there's priorities for the city that you're saying that this is something that's really important, either a bill that's going through Sacramento that is going to adversely impact you, or something that you think would be really helpful, those are the areas where we'd like to go hand-in-hand with you and kind of leverage all those relationships we have, not just with our local delegations, but with some other organizations that we work with throughout the state of California, to say, here's how do we target other regions in the state as well? So it really kind of, we would want to tailor to, what is it you would like us to focus on for you, and work with you to kind of making sure that you feel like you're getting your money's worth out of this membership.
Exactly, because since the San Gabriel Valley has 31 cities, okay, 31 cities, and right now, a lot of emphasis would be the west side, and a lot of resources didn't come to our east side. So if we join, okay, and pay the fee, but we really want to see the benefit, the fee or influence can come to our east side, okay, and bring business or bring some kind of lobby or grant into our region. Otherwise, it's really no point to pay the fee, and we don't get a benefit.
No, definitely. And that's something we try to do with all our membership, because, you know, it's a lot of money, we want to make sure that we're respectful, and want to make them feel like they're getting, they feel like their money's being well-spent, like they're getting a value out of it. value out of it. And so, that's something we would definitely work with you on, and again, it would depend what your priorities would be, we'd want to make sure that we can deliver on those items.
And, and since we have a three major city with over the 100,000 populations, the west side, Pasadena, middle is El Monte, and the east side is West Covina, so we are currently number two, just below the, okay, under Pasadena. Of course, Pomona is more population than the three of us, but Pomona is in Pomona Valley. My point is, I think right now is, okay, after your presentations, they told, we would discuss, okay, do we have a budget? Should we go back to the membership? Seeing we are original founder, and what kind of benefit we can get from the, okay, San Gabriel Economic Partnership, if we can get our weight, of what the fee we pay? I think that is how we need to see, and we, we was the member, okay, and a couple of years, and I think this couple of years, we are not a member, due to we didn't pay the fee. So, should we pay the fee, depending on the budget issue, and depending on the benefit we can get from, from your organization?
No, and definitely, we can work with your staff to come up with, one, make sure that the fee levels are a level that is not going to be detrimental to the city, and look at what are the things that we can do, whether it's connecting you for some of the engagements, whether it's on the board, whether it's on committees, whether it's doing targeted outreach to businesses in the city, or advocacy as it comes through, and kind of work with you to engage on that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Now, before we move forward to our oral communications, I'd like to bring Erin Sharoma, superintendent of the principal San Jose Charter Academy, up to the front again. Testing. Okay. So, on behalf of the city of West Covina, I have a certificate of recognition for San Jose Charter Academy on the occasion of its 2023 National Blue Ribbon School. Want to say some more words?
Any board members, other leaders?
Have the board members come up with? Okay, now, we can move on to oral communications. If you'd like to address the city council, please fill out your orange card, and bring it to our city assistant city clerk. When you hear your name being called, please start lining up in the center row, the timer will start when your name is called. How many people?
I have 10 speakers left, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Matthew Smith.
I was wondering if the council could do something for all of us in the public? Can we have a dictionary that has your definitions of what certain words mean? Because they seem to be the exact opposite of what I understand them to be. You know, you'll say things like, you support business, but when we got close to $20 million in COVID, that was specifically designed for businesses and residents, you gave zero. I don't understand the support. One council member says, this is a great place to hold business, to have your business, except their business is in Temple City. And not only do they have their business in Temple City, when they meet with people from outside the area, they don't meet with them in West Covina, they meet with them in Temple City. You know, you say how you, how you want Glendora Avenue to be successful, but the general plan has, like, the heights, not the heights, but the colony being built along there. So, I'm a little confused. You say we can run the Sportsplex better, except it's virtually closed, except for festivals for Mrs. Wu. Better means not worse than what it was before, you know? We're losing a million dollars plus, counting. You know, you've been working with, who was it, Skag for four years, to synchronize lights? I thought it was hilarious, the guy basically said, we'll put in a request, and when we get some money, we can do it. Well, my question is, why haven't we done it in the city? I know where we could get $250,000 from, that's not subsidizing Mrs. Wu's festival next year. Surplus. Am I interrupting you? Surplus. Income of 123 million, expenditures of 129. That's a deficit. Legal expenses, the state of the city. We had a great year. Thought there was a typo, that should have been four plaintiffs, and then a couple weeks later, you're transferring over $4 million, because we had higher-than-expected legal Council complains that you're working too hard, you're not paid enough. And then I look at these things, and I go, please stop working so hard, you're killing the city. Budgeting. Wow. Let's take what we spent last year and just add more to it. Let's not do an analysis of what needs to be there. You know, you tell the public that the reason we took away outdoor dining on Glendora, on Glendora, was because the county wouldn't let us do it. But the county says, no, it's up to your planning commission, your city, to okay those things. So, I don't understand. Is there just, you know, there's a guy on, a guy I see on the internet, that he'll take statements that people make, and if we're delusional, he'll say they're delulu. You ought to watch the guy, he'd be perfect for, you know, listening to you folks. But I do, you know, you, you talk about human rights and everybody getting along, and I don't need to repeat the antisemitism, the, the, you know, the race baiting that goes on, you know, a member of our council saying they're Hispanic, but they don't think like them, you know, that, you know, is this, you know, thing about wanting to get rid of renters, so you come up with this harassing thing that, for parking regulations, that happens to be where renters are. Wonder why? And who are most of our renters? But I do want to end on a good note. I, I saw that there's a new program on, that when you move into the city, the city will come and take away all the trash and debris that the previous owner might have left. And I was wondering, can we, can I get some of the, can I get that number, or is there a place on the web that I can request that type of service that you're giving?
Thank you.
I wasn't finished when you interrupted.
R. Robinson, followed by Matthew Smith, followed by Daryl Sprivey?
Talking with residents, I'm informed that you folks are about ready to throw a lot more money at the code enforcement department. A previous council, as a cost-saving measure, decided to eliminate the code enforcement department completely, and nobody noticed, the trashcan police. Last week, I was at Food for Last on Azusa Avenue, and a lady mentioned to the clerk that a man just walked out with an armful of meat, and the clerk said, well, it's not a crime, as long as it's not $950. We're talking about Small Business Saturday. Small businesses can't survive if people can just walk in and steal $950 worth of inventory. And it probably wasn't even a report, it was a crime. But crime is up nationwide, and I'm sort of favoring more street people, policemen on West Covina streets, rather than code enforcement. And turning to consent calendar item number five, it's, my understanding is, you folks cost the taxpayers in West Covina $11,000 to $12,000 each apiece every year, and according to this, this will increase the allowance and council expense and reimbursement policy for the council. So, maybe, congratulations, maybe you guys will be getting $25,000. But the last audit showed that West Covina is probably a few years out of bankruptcy court. We're not as financially stable a city as, as the other 400 cities in California. So, at least, if you, if you give yourselves a, Tabitha Bye is probably not going to vote for it, because he's not here tonight. Good luck to you folks on your reelection. Probably, if you vote for that, nobody's going to notice anyway. So, I just thought I'd mention that. And my next topic, continuing on the topic of the vaccine cult, and the DC clown show, our legislature and administration, and the official press cartel conspiracy, that's also called the Trusted News Initiative. We've been hearing about that the last few years. A few in the federal administration have bothered to take their official oaths of office, and are operating now in a fraudulent system under color of authority. The president, the president's cabinet remains unsworn, according to attorney Todd Callender. Thus, they cannot exercise official duties, and have no power to produce, plan, enact, or carry forward policy. It's only Kabuki Theater and soap opera are, this, and it just shows our emerging status as a homeless-infested third-world nation. I mean, if we can't control our national borders, we're not a country anymore. The conspirators have gained a phony possession of, I'm talking to the people with no oaths of office, possession of the machinery of government under the pretense of a public health emergency. Instead of implementing our constitution, an unconstitutional system of medical tyranny has appeared, including mandates, bribes, blackmail, threatened job loss for noncompliance, and generally nullifying traditional American values and freedom, substituting social distancing and masks. And this is only temporary, just to flatten the curve, they, they said, for a couple of weeks. It's been years. Unfortunately, temporary measures are becoming permanent. Ever heard of the Declaration of North America?
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Well, it was signed, it was signed by Biden on January 6th. Let me finish my sentence.
We've been through this before.
And three, three presidents.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
And our.
Our next speaker is Matthew Smith, followed by Daryl Sprivey, followed by Elsie Messman.
Good evening, city council. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and Roxanne Lurma for the Festival of Fright that occurred, what, a week and a half, two weeks ago, right before Halloween. We at Scoop Street and Bun Street participated in giving out candy. We were one of the spots locally that had the kids and dolls coming in and picking it up. We had a sign on the window, candy on the counter, and it was designated online, and maps for them to come to, for candy pickup spot from us. So, we all thank you guys for being, for, thank Parks and Rec, Roxanne, for including us in that, and also the city council for hosting another event in front of Glendora Avenue. It was busy, a lot of people, very active, very festive. So, you know, thank you for choosing that as a location for an event such as that. I have a, also a request, about, over a month ago, Scoop Street, Bun Street, Mariscos, met with the city, city manager, multiple departments, regards to a plan for outdoor dining, and a presentation was supposed to be presented to the city council or a plan. I was wondering if I could get an update, or the public could get an update regarding the direction that that is going in regards to outdoor dining, and what was discussed at that meeting? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl Sprivey, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Winwin Zong.
How's everybody tonight? I just want to start by saying, I'm not here to attack anybody in the city. I appreciate everybody that works in the city, especially the police department, because they're trying really hard to help us out in certain situations, and I appreciate the fire department for looking after my injuries, and always love building and safety, Lisa down there, great crew. I want to share a story about crime and safety. I, I was attacked at work on the 25th of this month, and basically, we called 911, and about 10 or 15 minutes later, the police arrived, and, well, you would think these guys would go to jail, but they're still living next door to where I was working off of Shasta and Vine. I mean, it doesn't make any sense, because they came into my customer's house and beat me up. So, now, what I have is a police report, I have MRIs and X-rays to take care of, I have medical bills, I have a bill from the fire department, West Covina Fire Department, I have no accountability whatsoever. I lost my job, because the customer is now afraid of living next door to a psychopath, because he's violent. Him and his friend are both violent people. They have a three-year-old and a seven-year-old daughter, and they're scared to have me on the job, for my safety and for their family's safety. Now, my wife is fearing for her safety, because these guys can figure out where I live, because I, as a licensed contractor in, in West Covina and the state of California, my business information is my home address. So, these guys can retaliate anytime they want and come over to our property, and this is another reason I really appreciate the good work of the police department here in West Covina. However, the sentiment seems to be that their hands are tied. Cases like this, which would be a felony in Florida, I'm from Florida, my family's from Florida, in Florida, if two guys broke into a house and beat the crap out of somebody, they would be facing multiple felonies, and they would be in jail. Okay? But not in California. When we vote for people like George Gascon, we support George Gascon, you're saying that it's okay, we don't want to hurt the feelings of criminals, we'll let them go, do whatever they want. they want, and they will not be held accountable. The police have informed me that this is a misdemeanor at best, and the DA may just look at it, or they may just throw it out, and it's going to take months. So I secured an attorney for a civil suit, and I guess that's all I can do, because these guys are not going to be held accountable in West Covina. But I want to say I really appreciate and respect the West Covina Police Department. They're really great people, especially officers like Ledesman and Matt Bowen, Lieutenant Nelson, great, great, great people. And I appreciate the drive-by the other night. We had somebody messing around our driveway with a duffel bag at 1:00 something in the morning. They came by, swooped in twice, and scared them off. Hey, I appreciate that. So I don't know what else to say, but we got to change the way we vote, because our hands are tied, and crime is spiking. We are not safe in West Covina anymore. I'm not safe on my job anymore. My wife is not safe in this city. And I guess that's all we can do. Well, I am going to take my wife to the gun range and tighten up her group, because all we have is each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elsie Messman, followed by Wenwen Zong, followed by Jerry Potchess.
My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. When is this city going to hire a qualified city manager? Our acting city manager is not qualified, and we need a new city manager with experience. A yes vote is not a recommendation. Number two, the City Traffic Committee approved one lighted stop sign on Gemini Street. TransTech, which is an engineering company, approved a lighting stop sign at Gemini and Woodgate, as we requested. I have 220 signatures that people want lighted stop signs. At the traffic committee meeting I attended, I was told it was too expensive, and then they could use yellow tape, et cetera. I think we deserve better than this Mickey Mouse deal. Does anyone, does someone have to be killed before we get these signs approved? Why do we have four lighted signs at Citrus and Cameron? And two blocks away on Citrus and Cortez, another four lighted signs? And four lighted signs at Glendora off of Alinda? People do not always stop at night, and the signs are hard to see. Shadow Oak is not a straight street, like the three other examples I mentioned, and I would hope council would approve both streets. Number three, the $5,000 allowance is a little steep. I would like to see the city have less festivals, which are not necessary, and not everyone has to attend a grand opening. We should be spending the city's money for benefits for residents, like matching the paint on all the walls, fixing potholes, and set up a food bank with a church to help the people. When the money runs out, you know who's going to be responsible for that? You people. Do we really need 17 code officers and seven vehicles, with two people in each vehicle, and one driving and one giving out tickets? Why were residents not notified? I talked to the police a number of times, in fact, I talked to two officers, and they said that at that particular time, it was COVID, so they weren't giving out tickets. Okay? Now, the other day, I looked out the window, and I see a code enforcement officer putting something on a resident's window. And now the residents are getting very upset, because on one street, I already saw eight, because they don't know that they're enforcing that thing. And I know they're upset, and they, I could use another word, but I won't, with what they say. I will hope, I will, will, and I hope the residents, like I'm going to do, I'm going to let my neighborhood know, if I see a street on the car, I have their number, I'll call them and tell them, hey, move your car, today is street cleaning. Do we have to be that? Are we hurting that bad that we're not even letting people know that you're giving tickets? And I think everybody else should try and do the same thing, notify your neighbors. I said, this is a cheap way of keep making money for the city. Thank you.
Wenwen Zong, followed by Jerry Potchess, followed by Jim Grivitch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, all City Council members, Ms. Acting City Manager, staff, and members of the community. I'm Wenwen Zong, West Covina Library Manager. West Covina Library currently is still closed for building construction and renovation, and I do not have a new update as of now. But as soon as I know anything and have an update, I definitely will tell you immediately. West Covina Library continue to provide sidewalk service and telephone support during library closure. And we have access to all library locations, collections, and online resources. And we can, not only just for you to pick up the materials at the sidewalk service, we can also search the library catalog for the materials, the library material books, and then anything like books and other materials for you, and reserve for you, for you to pick up at the sidewalk service. And I also wanted to let you know, the library have free COVID-19 antigen self-tests available for the public to take. And the library continue keeping connected with the schools by visiting classes and schools, and also participating in school special programs. And we also contacting the school teachers and give them information about upcoming library programs and the resources related to schools and students. And so if you have any questions, reference questions, any information, please give the library a call. We'll be happy to help you at sidewalk service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Potchess, followed by Jim Grivitch, followed by Bill Elliott.
Jerry Potchess, West Covina resident. I'm going to talk on two things, which is unusual for me. First one is the council allowance. The council raised their monthly stipend from $765 to $2,027. That's a huge increase that seemed to be, quote, justified by cherry-picking cities to compare their annual salaries. Yes, Councilman Wu pointed out that Burbank's council gets $50,841, and other cities that pay more than West Covina does. Councilman Wu did not point out, for example, that other cities pay less than West Covina. Covina, for example, pays $4,114. Monterey Park pays $6,000. Downey pays nothing. Each city should be viewed independently. This cherry-picking needs to stop. There's more than population and council pay to consider. For example, Burbank's median home income is $829,406. West Covina's is a measly $622,367. Burbank has an airport, the entertainment industry, and much more. Council gave themselves a huge raise and now wants to consider department head management benefits. The council that stopped the department head benefits was correct to do so. It was not sustainable. With the huge raise you just gave yourselves, the extra money, 300 for this and 300 for that, is not necessary. Regarding the stipend for the Audit Committee, I have mixed feelings on that. I think it was well-intended on your part. But the Audit Committee, and it's a committee, not a commission, functions a little differently. They do a good job. Some, and I'm not saying this happens with this group, but sometimes money influences, and perhaps they should just continue the way they are. My other item is street sweeping. I attended all four meetings. It was infuriating that the resident comments at the last meeting we were notified were not going to be included in the report. The council may not care, but the residents care. We take time and we comment, we work at this, going to these meetings. I do appreciate Mayor Pro Tem, Tabitha Bay, and Councilman Cantos having expressed at the meeting an interest in what we had to say. Mayor Pro Tem was online, and Mayor Diaz, you were receptive to having some input. Since the city's in compliance with the state when it comes to meeting the state mandate, I see absolutely no reason to change the entire city to no parking on Street Sweeping Day. There's not a problem citywide, it's just certain areas. Encourage those people to use the existing process. Neighborhoods that want signs posted should be told how to do it. The last thing we need, and it infuriates me that you're even considering having code enforcement ride behind a street sweeper, you're thinking of spending over a million dollars to start this program? That's ludicrous. Absolutely ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Grivitch, followed by Bill Elliott, excuse me, followed by Steve Bennett.
Jim Grivitch, I guess I'm going to pick up where she left off. I wanted to talk about street sweeping. As she said, you're going to be spending millions of dollars in this over a long period of time. There's no mandate to do it, and I've never really seen a justification statement on why you're doing it. I do know that there's going to be a lot of unhappy people in West Covina. I'm going to pick a street that happens to be close to where I live, it's called Larkwood. And I went down the street and counted cars. Over half the houses on that street had five or six vehicles in their prop, two in the front, three or four in the driveway. They were maxed out. These people don't make a lot of money, they're all working adults. What are they going to do? Has anybody thought about this? And then when I look at the plan that was published, they don't even have alternate sides set up for that street. It's going to be all day. They can't park. What are those people going to do? They don't even know this is going to happen until they get a ticket. I just think it's reprehensible. You've heard several people tonight talk about, what do people care about in the city? They care about safety. That's what they care about. They care about being beat up and nothing can be done about it. They don't care about whether their streets are swept every day. They don't care about that. They care, they want to be safe in their homes. The priority in this city should be police. It's been on the surveys, it's been in the discussions, but nothing's happening. Instead, we hire code enforcement. Nobody asked for that. What they asked for was safety, police. I don't understand the thinking. And there was a comment in this report that you got tonight that said something to the effect, well, we won't be able to spend the money on something else. Well, what are the other choices on how this money could be spent? A million dollars is a lot of money. I'm sure the city could find something else better to do with it. And it was just disturbing. It was like a decision was made, well, I want to do this, I'm going to do it. No thought of anything else. Or, you know, I've talked endlessly at many meetings about the fact the city really doesn't have enough money to get by operationally. Right now, it's behaving as if there is no limit to the checkbook, I don't know why. And the fact is, you have to be careful about how you spend your money. Because if you aren't, unfortunately, in the future, not today, somebody will have to start, fire people, because you weren't careful. And I just think this particular thing is foolish. I'm going to second something that Jerry said. There's absolutely no reason to put signs all over the city. You drive down most of the streets in the city, there's no problem on Street Sweeping Day, you know, a couple of cars parked, there are problems in certain places. And on those places, I do think you have to set up a system so the people have a place to park. They have to be able to park on at least the other side of the street, and it can't, it shouldn't be all day. I have occasion, every week actually, to park in the city of Los Angeles on the streets, because my wife has serious medical issues, I have to park there. They have three-hour parking on one side of the street for street sweeping. Three-hour, that's it. And they can do it, why can't we? Why all day? Why both sides of the street? Three hours, one side of the street. I don't, and as Jerry said, the consultant didn't listen to anything anybody had to say. So they had the report written, I think, before they came, and it was probably some report they did for some other city. Anyway, the, I'm just very disturbed about this process. I'm not saying that there isn't a problem and that something shouldn't be done about it, but what was done here, I just think was not proper. Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by David Schwartz.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bill Elliott. Jerry came out swinging against the Assistant City Manager. I usually don't comment on things like this, but if not Paulina, who? How is she so unqualified? She's been with the city 20 years. You know what kind of institutional knowledge she has of this city? I mean, if that gas-bag Chris Freeland could get promoted up through the ranks and become the city manager, Pauline would be my choice. She's competent, she's knowledgeable, she's supportive, and I think the City Council should think long and hard about bringing somebody in to the city to be city manager when we already have one. Paulina's the obvious heir apparent to the job. And we could get, we could get a nightmare, you guys could hire the wrong person, and we could get somebody, you know, that didn't perform so well or was defiant. You know, everybody in the whole city works for the city manager. The city manager works for the city council. And this is a rough decision, and I'm glad I don't have to make it, but please consider that. I also wanted to mention that, you know, some of you know that there was a battery committed in the City Council chambers recently against me. And I made a police report, and the police investigated, and just like Mr. Spirey, District Attorney just declined the case. And, you know, I can't put my hands on somebody in this council. Can you imagine if I went and put my hands on Jim Grivitch and told him to pipe down? Somehow, I think the law would apply to me at that point. You know, I can't put my hands on Tony Wu, although sometimes I'd like to. But we all have to respect each other. And I know in the last City Council election, one City Council candidate threatened to throw another City Council candidate to the ground. And, you know, coming off this investigation, off this incident in the City Council chambers, it's not that big of a deal, it's really not, and people have told me as much, and I pretty much agree with it, except nobody could put their hands on me. Well, it's happened again. A battery was committed against me on the streets of Covina recently by Brian Tabatabai, the Mayor Pro Tem. And I just want to put the city attorney on notice that this occurred, and I just want to let everybody know, if you think you have the rights to come put your hands on me several times, I am going to respond in kind. And I would encourage Mr. Spirey to take advantage of our newly-discovered Second Amendment in West Covina. Thank God for Clarence Thomas. Thank God for Clarence Thomas and the Supreme Court that wiped out the authority, the discretion of the police chief to just summarily dismiss applications, so much so that they hadn't issued one in this city since 1978. That's, that's wrong. Every police chief was wrong about that. Every single police chief we had has been wrong about that. And they were forced to change that. So I, I suggest people out there reckon with the fact that there is no justice in California anymore. Someone can put their hands on you, someone can beat you up, and nothing is going to happen. So make sure you respond in kind. And I just want to also point out that these acts of putting their hands on someone, especially someone like the Mayor Protem of our city thinks he has the right to put his hands on me in public, you know, those are incendiary acts, or they can be. And, uh, I showed a lot of self-control that night, and I don't expect it to happen again. And I think I deserve an apology from the next mayor of West Covina, assuming. So, uh, there was one other thing I wanted to mention. Street sweeping, fundamentally, I've been against it the whole time, but if it's, if it's the ordinance, we all have to follow the law. I think it's for, the street sweeping is a good thing, and keeps the junk out of the river. Thank you.
Steve Bennett, followed by David Schwartz.
It's always fun following the incoherent ramblings of the Village Elliott. Mayor Hernandez, Councilmember Jacobo, Artigo, Bello, Mirabelle. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was in the city of Bell. You remember, they were the ones that gave themselves exorbitant raises, huge raises, made all kinds of money at the taxpayers' dollar. That's what you guys are doing. If you can't do this job, the one that you volunteered to do when you put your name on a ballot, resign now. If it's too much for you, resign. There's no other option. There is no reason that you guys should increase any of your stipends or increase any of your benefits. As Mr. Shoemaker stated, show us the results that give us the reason to give you a raise. And let the residents be a part of that discussion. A $5,000 a year travel budget that if you don't use it rolls over year to year? Are you kidding me? You don't deserve that. Where are you going to go? League of California cities, contract cities? Those don't cost that much. Sorry, I've been to them. I know what they cost. They don't cost that much. It's a waste of money. You guys should not even consider it. And the fact that you're trying to increase your salaries, your stipends, as they call it, for a volunteer job, to 300% over what it is now, you don't deserve it. Resign. Let somebody do it who's actually willing to do it and understands the job. There's 100 people in this city that would do what you're doing right now, either for free or the money that's on the table. Trust me. Trust me. All of you, resign if you think you deserve a raise, because you don't. Now let's talk about street sweeping. So I've attended the community meetings. And your consultant isn't willing to, at the time of the last meeting, include any of the verbal comments that we presented at every meeting. He might include some tonight, but for the most part, he was not including them. I thank Councilman Kantos for standing up at the meeting and stating that he was looking for the residents' comments. He stood up for that. He actually asked for that when the motion originally came out. And I thank him for continuing down that path, because that is true transparency. However, at the last meeting, nobody really knew if the comments that residents had made over those times was going to be included. Let me give you my comments, and hopefully some clarity and some common sense. For those of you who attended the meetings, you heard me say the same thing. Number one, the city is 100% in compliance with stormwater runoff. According to state regulations, state laws, state ordinances, and state rules, West Covina is currently with a two-times-a-month street sweeping, 100% in compliance. Ask your consultant, because I did, and he said we are. Which means, the first question you have to ask yourself is, do we need to make a change? That answer is no, because we are 100% compliant with state rules. So why do we want to make a change if it's not needed? Why? What's the reasoning? So you want to make a change and put $600,000 of signs out on the street, using a Measure W or whatever other measures are there? You want to then double the street sweeping possibly for double the money, going from 700, 600 and somewhat thousand, $700,000 to roughly 1.4 million, if that's the option you choose. But we don't need to do that because we're already in compliance, so it's not going to enhance our street sweeping to a benefit that we need. I'm sorry, am I keeping you from something? You keep checking your watch. So the issue is, why? There's no need. The second thing is, as Ms. Patras pointed out, is the fact that you have code enforcement slated to run behind them. Well, okay, let's add up that $470,000 for enforcement. You're looking at a million, million and a half to do something that's not needed in the city. Jim Grivitch even alluded to that. We don't need to do it. We're compliant. That's kind of like making decisions for no reason. I'm sure you're used to that. But the point is, we don't need to do it. And as Jim pointed out, a problem that exists in 10% of the city or less does not mean 100% change to the city. 90% of the people don't need this change. And at the last meeting, I asked a bunch of people in the room, about nine people, there was only one or two people who actually had an issue. Let's work with them. Tony, Madam Mayor, you don't have an issue in your street, because you have big driveways and you can park all your cars there. And you probably don't have an issue with cars on the street, because most of the houses in your area have big driveways. So for you, the change is not an issue. But in those high-density areas, in that rent control area that John Shoemaker talked about, that you wanted a registration program for, those areas are going to be affected, and those residents are going to get repeated tickets. That's the answer. You're in this for the money.
David Schwartz, followed by Glenn Kennedy.
Hello, everybody. I don't have a speech today, but I've been writing down a few things that has been bothering me before I did all those speeches. First of all, what happened to Mayor Protem tonight? I don't know if you guys said anything at the beginning, but I don't, why isn't he not here? Oh, okay. Thank you. Also, Paulina, I found out that the Action Food Pantry, I guess they get a grant every year of $20,000 from the city of West Covina, and apparently it's been downgraded to 5,000. Is there a reason for that? And if there's any way that I can help to get it back up to the 2,000 on the grant, I'd be more than happy to console with you. Last Saturday, I was walking my dog over at Wal, at Walmarado Park, and it was early in the morning, and kids are playing baseball with their families. And I looked down on the ground, and what do I see? Three hyperduric needles in the park. It's probably easy to say that it's probably from the homeless people that are hanging out. I've seen them all over West Covina, hyperduric needles, kind of like where McDonald's and El Pollo Loco is. I see it there all the time. We've got to find a way to, um, do something about this homeless crisis that we have Also, I think it was about a month ago, you guys, we, they showed us a presentation of the bus stops, and they had, they said to fix these bus stops or to put new ones in, it was going to cost $60,000 apiece. Well, I, I think instead, we should, you guys should think outside of the box. And I think you could use West Covina citizens that, that are contractors or car dealerships or, or, you know, or welders that can build these for a fraction of the cost. And I think you guys, if you haven't already endorsed that, I think you guys should think about that. $60,000 for a bus stop is crazy. Now, I didn't know about this whole thing about the street sweeping, but I've got problems with the street sweepers. For the last six weeks, okay, the sweeper has gone down our street and has never picked up a pile of sand that's on the corner of, um, the southwest corner of Service and Lark Allen. It's still there to this day. And it's been at least six weeks that they haven't done it. The street sweepers go way too fast and end up smearing the dirt instead of picking up the dirt. And also, I noticed that the sweepers, because I walk my dog in downtown West Covina here on Glendora Avenue, I see the sweepers there almost every morning outside in front of the businesses. And I noticed that before the Halloween event, that they went behind the alley and swept it. But they went fast down the alley, and they hardly picked up any of the trash that's back there. And behind those businesses, there's a lot of trash that needs to be cleaned up. So if the sweepers are supposed to be doing that, they're not doing their job. They're going way too fast. I mean, I think I said this about a year ago about the street sweeping, that they have to go a certain pace to go to do the right job. If they go too fast, it just smears it. And the budget should be figured out by how many miles, curb miles we have, and that's how fast these sweepers should go. And that's not happening. They're going way too fast, and it's, they're doing nothing. Now, the other thing is the library. It's still closed, okay? I don't get it. We had several schools that have been torn down, bulldozed down, and houses built here in less than a year, and they can't do a frickin' library. People should be fired.
Thank you.
Glenn Kennedy.
Good evening, City Council. How are you doing? First things first, I know Saturday's Veterans Day. I would like to sit here and thank all veterans who served this country, fought for it, to give me the freedom to live in a free country, and give me my freedom of speech. Thank you very much. With that, I'm representing the Historical Society tonight, and I would like to invite everybody December 1st to our meet and greet. We also have written a book, we're writing two. We have one that's being published right now, and it'll be out within a week. And we want to invite the City Council to come. We're trying to have a, a shing ding in the middle of December. So you guys are invited. And by the way, the whole public is invited for our meet and greet. So, and, Mr. Spivey, my heart goes out to you, brother, but I would suggest that you get yourself a German shepherd or get yourself a firearm, because if somebody breaks into my house, I ain't calling the cops, I'm calling the coroner, because I guarantee you, he ain't going to leave alive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor. Mr. G.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, Councilmen, and Mayors, and Clerk. This is the number one thing that's needed to be required. Children need to be able to walk the streets. I'm alumni of Vine School. Used to walk a mile, carefree, in the city, from all the way next to the golf course to Vine, by myself. Never had to worry. Have people picking up their kids. Why? Because it's not safe. Why? People are not enforcing law. Okay? That's important to the city. Talk about business, small business, there is the man who is a small businessman who needs help from the city to protect him, so he can bring in money to prosper the city, to pay for the lights, to pay for the schools, to pay for the electrical at Cortez Park. That's what makes the city, raising the standard. It's great that we're going to be compassionate, but proper compassion, not wasted compassion. It's hard to do the right thing. They've elected you to do the noble thing. It's more important that you take noble action, to help these citizens to feel free in their home, to be able to walk the streets. The street sweeping? Okay, I don't know who's in charge of it, but I've actually, I've witnessed the same thing in my neighborhood. But they don't even turn on the water because of water shortage. They need to turn on the water so the brushes can pick up the dirt. That's how those machines are working. But somebody got in the mind that we have to protect our water. No, we have to protect our health. Isn't that what we've been locked down for the last three, four years? Health starts in the streets. Plumbers, water, electricians, small businessmen. I really appreciate what you're trying to do, but think about it. Do we need another clerk? Or do we need another police officer? How many officers can be hired instead of a clerk? What's a clerk going to do? Add statistics? I see all the wonderful statistics we get. I've asked the city clerk to email me on the homeless issue. Why don't we take lead, something West Covina can do? Be the city that three strikes you're out. Come to the city, everybody's welcome. But if he finds you three times on the street, time to move on. It'll be cheaper. Now, we may not get the revenue from the good field tax, or whatever it is, we pay for it, but the growth we'll get from it, because people want to live here, because it's a safe city, because they know it's a safe city, not just a statistic. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant, I mean, I'm sorry, Actine, City Manager, can you please address the speakers?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and fellow Council members. So one of the comments made was about a new service regarding moving in and moving out and trash pickup. That's actually a service that we've always had with our contract with Athens. So if residents are moving in or out of their home, they have a, they're allowed to have a one-time unlimited waste collection pickup courtesy of Athens, and that's something that can be scheduled directly through Athens. Also, we've always had at least one code enforcement officer with the city of West Covina, so we never fully got rid of our code enforcement. And it's been through the direction of our current council to try to actively beautify our community through our city properties, but also help those private properties as well. And that's why we've increased our code enforcement staff in the city. I also wanted to thank Matt in Bun Street for participating in Festival Frights. We're very happy when the vendors on Glendora Avenue participate in those events that we have in the downtown area. In regards to the outdoor dining, I believe staff communicated that we had to hold off on the presentation pending additional information. You're always welcome to reach out to staff or myself to get those updates. And, Mr. Spivey, I'm sorry to hear what you went through. I'm glad that you're doing well, and I wish you a speedy recovery. And I'm also glad that PD was able to, it's like, I don't see him, respond to, to his calls. Ms. Messman, so when requests are made for traffic signals, there's justifications that are required based on warrants that are found in the California Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices that are supported by site-specific engineering studies. And so that's something that comes out of our engineering department, whether it's warranted for a traffic signal or a stop sign. The Audit Committee currently doesn't receive a stipend, and as well as the comments regarding the council, increasing compensation and the stipends for the Audit Committee members will be included at a future staff report or council meeting. Wenwen, thank you again for your updates on the library. I did want to mention that I did speak with representatives from the County Library, and they will be at a council meeting in December. We're hoping for December 5th to provide an update to the community as to where their, the status of the construction and reopening of the County Library. status of the construction and reopening of the County Library. Just a couple general comments that I want to make on street sweeping, since we do have a presentation this evening. We did not include the specific verbatim comments in the report. We had the survey open until Monday of this week, and so we wanted to include a summary of all those results from the surveys and from the community meetings, and that will be included in the presentation this evening. There are alternative days in multifamily neighborhoods to address those areas that have a higher density or in higher densities. The funding for the program is a restricted fund, so it's Measure M and Measure R, and those are restricted specifically for transit or street rehabilitation reconstruction, traffic monitoring, and items that would cover street sweeping and code enforcement in regards to street sweeping, which would be parking enforcement. While there was a comment made about why do we have to put signage? Unfortunately, in order to enforce it, we do have to put signage throughout certain areas in order to be able to enforce that parking requirement. So like I said, I'll let, more of the information will be shared with the presentation. Mr. Elliott, thank you for the kind words of support. And so in regards to the CDB allocations, so every year, there's an annual action plan where programs are prioritized, and based on those priorities, funding allocations are made. And so that does come before the City Council, and that's a City Council decision. If next year, we can take a look at reallocation of those funds. I did want to share that we are getting less CDBG funding every year. So that does limit our ability to, where we can allocate those funds or distribute those funds. And then, Mr. Kennedy, you invited us to the Historical, First Branch event. If you could send us the invitation so that we can share that information with the City Council, we'd be happy to pass that invitation along. And I think that concludes my response.
Councilman Wu.
Yeah, I want to follow up regarding the flashing stop sign. And I think, okay, this is the agenda for our current mayor, okay? And I've been trying to request, okay, a lot of neighborhoods should put a flashing stop sign, a solar panel, so it doesn't cause any electricity from any hot wire. And if you go to South Side, okay, Gemini's and some of the shadow, okay, it's pretty dark, and the stop sign, you can barely can see it. I think that, I think that should be, have a flashing stop sign, okay, led to help the resident over there to can stop because of forward stop. So I think we really need our engineer to look into a lot of area, and maybe if we can, because this is not from general fund, this should be from our restrictive fund because it's a street and safety and traffic sign and stop sign. So I think we should look into it and try to install as many as we can, okay? And to make sure people can stop on the stop sign, because the flashing stop sign at night times, when I, okay, and took early home and I see this flashing stop sign, I will stop because you can see it. But otherwise, if you hold them back, I remember before, you cannot see the stop sign at all. So I think that is, okay, really legit to install the stop sign. I think we should look into it and all the neighborhood, all the area if we can. Okay, thank you.
Can we move on to our City Managers' Report?
Oh, ready? Okay. So we had, I think it's our second annual Festival of Fights on Glendora Avenue. So we're very excited to continue hosting this event. And it's really special because we get to do costume contests for people of all ages, and we get a good participation, good participation from all of our residents. So we hope that they enjoyed it, and we hope the vendors continue to enjoy those events that we have downtown, and we look forward to the next one. Also, as I had mentioned previously, we are hosting open houses through our different facilities. This last Sunday, we had one at Cameron Community Center. It was jam-packed, there's a lot of people in attendance, and we got to see demonstrations from the different user groups that use the facility from cheer to gymnast, to, I think, is that taekwondo?
Karate.
Karate and to ballet. So it was really special. And the last open house that we will have will be at the Cameron Senior Center, and that's going to be in January, since the holidays are coming up, so we want to make sure people will be able to attend. So look out for that invitation. So as mentioned earlier, we are going to be celebrating for the six-year Small Business Saturday. If you want to participate, please sign up. We have that information on our website. We do promote the small businesses that participate on the city's social media and on our website to help residents shop small. We encourage residents to shop small and partake in the event. It helps keep local dollars in West Covina, that helps pay for all our programs and services. So please shop local and shop small. Something that is a big change and very excited is we have started the new landscape scope in the landscape maintenance districts on the South Side. So this is the work that started at Wood Grove last week. As you can see, a lot of that, the shrubs have been torn down, and it leaves away for more visibility so that there's, hopefully addresses some of the encampment issues in that area. We do ask patience from our residents. It's going to look a little bit barren and brown. We are going to be doing ground cover, and within six months to a year, we're hoping that it's going to be green ground cover that's going to be in that area. But this is a major cleanup moving forward. It's going to be maintained up to four feet, and then the height of the trees is going to be up to nine feet so that there's going to be visibility in that area, and it's going to be maintained moving forward. Also, something we're doing is we're installing a gate at Shota Oak Park. So as the park closes at sundown, the gate, or when the last event or program is held at the facility, there will be a gate to close off the park for, you know, when it's closed. So that gate should be completed by end of next week. Just an update, we are moving forward with installation of the Musco lighting at Cortez Park. So we are hoping that that should be completed by end of December 2023, so by end of next month. Very exciting. Also, last meeting, I got a request from council on an update on the pavement management program. So it, what provides a formal systematic approach to assessing, monitoring, and managing the condition of street pavements in the city. And part of that is a five-year plan is which streets are going to be addressed and when they will be addressed. And so we are looking, the consultant prepared, has completed the survey, and we are looking at different scenarios for the next five years. We are hoping, or actually, we'll be meeting with the consultant this week to go over that report, and then we're hoping to bring it before the City Council, January, at a January City Council meeting. The other item that was brought up at the last council meeting is the website, and that it's a little bit hard to use and not very user-friendly. So it's still a work in progress, but there's some improvements that we've made already. We're trying to make it very easy and accessible for residents to find information and not have to go through pages and pages of, or links and links and sublinks. So we've created additional buttons on the homepage, and I don't know if you can go on the homepage, Roxanne? So we added agendas and meetings, has always been there. We added permits. So this is more for like construction development, if you want to remodel your home, if you want to build a new home or do construction in the city, those are permits. Then you have apply register, so that's, if you can click on that, Roxanne, that's for our residents, if you want to do anything from look from job opportunities in the city. And I can't see that far, so. To what community programs are available, once again, if you want development, construction, permit applications, residential programs, so we have two programs for our residents, a home preservation loan program and the home buyer assistance program, programs geared specifically to our senior citizens, if you want to do business with the city, volunteer opportunities, and then transportation, medical services are the programs, if you want to do ambulance subscription, dial a ride or move West Covina, and then a couple other items. So if you can go back to the homepage, the other new button, or two new buttons, is community events. So this is a one-stop shop with upcoming events on all city events. And so you don't have to go to the calendar and kind of see where it is, this is just a list, and then it links you back to the calendar that gives you more information on the event and includes a flyer. Back to the homepage, the next one is the Discover newsletter, so you don't have to dig through pages, it's right here on the homepage, and that takes you right to the new edition of the Discover Report and Issue, which is, has, that button has existed before, it's if you want to report graffiti, shopping cart, pothole. And then the last one is Get Involved, and that's if residents want to volunteer or get involved with city programs. That's the last button. So those are the main areas of changes that we've seen since the last council meeting. We'll continue, we're continuing to make those changes, but it is going to be an ongoing process. And then the last one, so we do have some upcoming events. As mentioned earlier, we have Veterans Day this Saturday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock here at the Civic Center Courtyard. We also have Small Business Saturday, Saturday, September 25th, and that's at various participating businesses, which will be listed on the city website. And then we have our holiday events coming up. It's Let It Snow in West Covina Friday, December 1st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. here at the Civic Center Courtyard. And then the annual Christmas Parade in Santa's Village, Saturday, December 9th, at the historic downtown West Covina. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Contos, you have a question?
Yes, Madam Acting City Manager, I have several questions on different fronts. So first, regarding Small Business Saturday on November 25th, from a communication standpoint, what has been the process of informing all of our West Covina businesses about the opportunity to advertise on our website?
So we send an email out to all the businesses, letting them know about the program, and whichever business qualifies and wants to participate gets put on the city website. And then we also do social media announcements to share that information.
And what tends to be the response rate, at least based on past years, by the businesses thus far? Just generally, what is the response rate of those businesses?
I think sometimes it gotten 15 to 20.
Okay, good. And then the second question is with regard to traffic generation, so that we have eyeballs on those businesses that do put up, have we budgeted for, or do we have a communications plan for increasing traffic to the website with that, with the page that's being developed for the businesses, so that way people will know to find it, so that way people will actually see all the information that the businesses put up?
Yeah, so what we do is we do market it on social media, and so we do use a user-friendly URL, so people can just put in, I think it's Small Business Saturday or SBS, and so it directs them to that page, and they don't have to dig through the city website to find it. And so it's a direct link to that page that has the businesses listed.
And, but I mean, through social media and other places, are we planning on literally paying to boost those posts so that way more residents see it? Because social media doesn't always reach everybody unless we literally boost the post, so that way it shows up in people's feeds?
That's something we can take a look at.
Okay, and then the second, oh gosh, it was, the second area has to do with Discover West Covina Magazine. I've brought up the accessibility issues in the past where the software is not user-friendly for people who use adaptive or assistive technology. So if there could please be a way to incorporate a text version of all the issues of Discover West Covina, so that that way people can just read the straight text, even if it doesn't have the pictures, there could be a description of what those pictures are, so that way it's fully accessible?
Yes, I know that we're working on creating it accessible for everyone, and so that's something that we're working on. If we can't do it for this next edition, we will see, you know, providing that Word version, as you mentioned, or something that's available to all.
Great, because that, we should, we should do that immediately and then go backwards, reverse chronologically, so that way the information is made available. There's one where I can't remember, but I'll turn over the time to my colleagues.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, I just want to follow up, okay? I think, thank you so much to put finally our newer improved website, okay, city website be functional. I know it's still in progress, but okay, how soon we can have a resident can type in their address to see how we're going to trash pick up, when they're going to have the tree trimming, how about their rating on their street, okay, when the street rating and when going to be paving or the repair or something? Or, okay, go to the, some people have a pothole on their street, they reported. Okay, so hopefully, all this information can be on the website, and the people can easily to see what they're surrounding.
So as of right now, we do, I don't know if you can, Roxanne? Oh, one of the main buttons that we've added a while, a couple, a month or two ago, was West Covina Resource Map, or Maps. And if you click on that. Oh, well, oh, that's, of course, all right, well, we will clean that up. But that page does provide a GIS map. So if you pull up your home, it'll tell you if there's a tree in front of your home that's not yours, if it's a city tree, what type of tree, when is the tree trimming cycle, your street sweeping days, your trash pickup days, what council district you're in. The one item that we are waiting to add is the pavement management plan. We are waiting for that, and we're hoping that by January, we, once it's approved by council, we'll be able to get that up with, you know, very shortly thereafter it's approved.
I'm sorry, I missed how soon, okay?
So once the pavement management plan gets approved by council, we're hoping...
I know, but when they can bring to us?
January 2024.
January, okay, okay, thank you.
I remember my question now. Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Council Kanto.
Oh, Madam Mayor, your voice has changed.
I just have a much deeper voice.
With regard to the website, can there be more prominent placement of people of being able to sign up for our email newsletters? And the second follow-up question to that is, can we make it a practice that whenever we have events, where we have a West Covina booth, that we have a way on-site for people to provide us with their name, email address, as well as the, and help, where our staff can act, can help our residents sign up for information items that are of interest to them, so that way we can track an increase in the different categories of, you know, of interest, where there are different lists, so that way we can increase the number of people who are directly made aware of information by email?
Yes, we definitely can. I know that it's on one of the how-do-ies, and I don't remember which one it is, but we can definitely make that more readily accessible to our residents on the e-notification.
Right. It's the one that has checkboxes, and you put your name and email address, then you check whether you want information about city agendas or events or whatever it is. But if we make sure to continually increase those mailing lists in everything we do, as well, that includes by actively inviting people to put their name on an email list, so that way they can be notified, that'll actually increase our communications up, reach to the community, especially when each email is accompanied with an action step of inviting people to forward the emails, so that way we can increase penetration into the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Thank you for that report, by the way. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar, 1 through 7? Councilman Contos?
Madam Mayor, item number four.
Okay. Okay, with the exception of four, do I have a motion to approve the rest?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to approve consent calendar items one through seven, with the exception of item number four, which is the consideration of traffic recommendations from the Traffic Committee meeting between March 23rd and August, excuse me, between March 2023 and August 2023. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Contos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With regard to item four, I don't remember which of the 17 items, but in support of Mrs. Messman, along with the 220 individuals who signed the petition, can we amend the the items so as to reflect that they to reflect installation of flashing stop signs as opposed merely to the the oversized or large stop signs that I think it says now? It's Temple and Woodgate, if I remember properly correctly.
I thought it was Gemini or?
Gemini, oh, you may be, yeah, I don't want to mistake.
We can clarify and yes, we can, we can make that change.
Woodgate.
Gemini and Woodgate.
So if if that can be done, then with that amendment, do I need to make a motion to amend approval or to just approve as amended? Mr. City Attorney?
We need to go to traffic.
Yeah, you can make a motion to approve as amended.
I move to approve as amended. Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Contos to move as amended with a second by Councilwoman Wu. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Okay. Now let's move on to a public hearing. This matter set for public hearing consists of an appeal of the decision by the Planning Commission to approve Precise Plan Number 23-06 to allow for the expansion of an existing auto dealership building located at 205 North Citrus Street. Will the clerk, city clerk verify the proper legal notices have been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the appeal on the Planning Commission's decision to approve the precise application. There will first be the presentation of the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The project before you has been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission on October 10, 2023. It is for a precise plan to add 13,130 square feet to an existing car dealership, which was previously occupied by the Nissan dealership. The existing site has approximately 98,500 square feet of total building area. Please note that the zoning is service commercial and in the service commercial zone, car dealerships are allowed by right. The the application itself is just to allow for the expansion of the dealership. The site is located in the northwest corner of Citrus Street and East Garvey Avenue. And the after the Planning Commission approval on October 10th, an appeal was filed by the owners of the Diamond Shopping Center, Diamond Shopping Center LLC, which is the shopping center that is currently under construction, located just south of the site. The the project site in itself, the entire dealership area is approximately 5,000, I'm sorry, it's approximately 5.26 acres. And the project site is limited to the front half of the dealership and a sliver along the south property line for the for parking and landscape improvements. The total square footage of the the project area is limited to 2.28 acres. As mentioned earlier, the appeal was filed and the reason for the appeal per the letter that was provided by the appellant is that the Planning Commission did not adequately discuss or understand concerns raised regarding drainage and flooding issues. There, going back to the site plan, so currently, when during the previous rains that occurred, there has been some drainage drainage issue that's pulling water along the south property line, mainly because at at the time, the the weep holes have been plugged close. And so sheet sheet flow was no longer flowing from from the Nissan, the former Nissan dealership property into the shopping center. And at the same time, the sump pump has has been not work has been broken and not working. So the current, the prop, the current ownership or has has installed temporary sump pumps to temporarily remedy the the drainage problem or issues. As part of the 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 review process, Envision Motors has submitted for for a plan check at risk. This includes grading plan check and in within the grading plan check and building plan submitted, it includes flatwork, curb curb and gutters, ADA upgrades, wheelstop and wheelstops and so forth. There is a condition of approval that's listed in the draft resolution, which is condition of under the Building Division Condition, Condition J and K, that addresses general grading, drainage and stormwater conditions, but it's not specific, it's more of a general condition. So however, part of the building or grading plan check includes a requirement to address the the drainage issue on site. So that's already been submitted as a plan check correction to the applicant. This project require is categorically exempt under CEQA because it is an infill project. The project in itself complies with the city's general plan. The project area, although the site is more than five acres, the project area is limited to two acres. The there is no threat end habitat or endangered species. There, there is no significant effect on traffic noise, air quality or water quality. And studies have been conducted by the CEQA, City of CEQA consultant, which is Ultra Systems. Mr. Michael Milroy of Ultra Systems is available if the City Council has any questions regarding the the environmental determination and and studies that have been conducted. And also the site is served with utilities. The projector is the site plan. The site complies or the project site complies with all setback requirements. It it also complies with, it's within the building coverage requirement and it complies with all landscaping and parking requirements in the city's municipal code. Again, the area, the front portion of the showroom, which is highlighted in a peach color, is the area that involves the expansion, which is the showroom, some offices to the south side and the vehicle delivery area. The vehicle, the vehicle delivery area is merely the area where vehicles enter from the outside to be displayed into the showroom. The projector is the floor plan for the first floor expansion. Again, it's the area that the expansion is limited to the area highlighted in blue. It comprises of 12,182 square feet and it's for the showroom offices and the vehicle delivery area. The second floor expansion, the majority, there is some second floor volume area where the showroom is because there is a high ceiling above the showroom, so it's open to below. But however, a portion, only 948 square feet of floor area is being added, which involves expansion to the the parts storage area and also the training, the training room along the side. There, in addition to the first floor expansion and the second floor expansion, they are doing some interior remodeling within the inside of the building. The projector is the front and rear rear elevations. The maximum height of the building is 49 feet 6 inches, which is the tower-like element along the 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 southeast side of the parking structure. It's mainly, the purpose of it is mainly to to express or show the branding for Toyota. The architectural style of the building is modern and it's primarily composed of aluminum, composite metal panels and glass panels. The the height of the build of the addition itself is mostly going to match the existing height of the 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 building, which is 38 feet 3 inches. And in in the SC zone, if the addition or a building is within within or greater than 100 feet from residential, then there is no height limit. The side elevations shows a portion of the the parking structure. There is not going to be any additions to the parking structure in itself. It's only the front half of the building. And in the 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 branding on the tower-like element. With this, staff is recommending or it is recommended that the City Council adopt the resolution approving precise plan and uphold this precise plan and upholding the Planning Commission's decision. If the City Council has any questions, I am available to answer. And also I have here Miriam Machado. She is the associate planner that was that assisted in working with on this project. She's also available to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for? Okay, would it be okay to call the appellant first? Can we have the appellant come up to speak if they'd like to speak? Appellant?
I don't think there's anyone representing the appellant here tonight.
Okay, then would the applicant like?
Did we get a card, anything? There's no appellant here.
No speaker card for the appellant.
Then have the applicant come next if there's no, there's no speaker.
We do have speaker cards for the appellant.
Mayor, if I may?
For the applicant?
Applicant, excuse me, applicant.
Mayor, if I may, for the record, the appellant was notified of the hearing and they received proper notification.
Why did I hear if they appeared? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name's Andrew Bays. I'm Vice President and General Counsel for Envision Motors. And we are aware of of what the appellant was concerned with. The the flooding is is something that we we became aware of before we actually took over the property. We were in, we were in discussions with the property owner because we're leasing this property and the property owner was aware, but there was essentially no tenant at that time and so it wasn't dealt with. But because of our expansion of the property, we made sure to include grading and stormwater reclamation as is required for the size of the, and it will deal with it once we get into our construction. We will make sure that that's no longer going to be a problem. There won't be standing water on the on the property and it'll be properly dealt with. And so it's that's, I believe it's still sitting with engineering who's looking at that plan and we will make sure that we follow all guidance from the Engineering Department. If you have any other questions, I'm free to answer.
Anyone?
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Councilman Contos?
I apologize because of the format, I'm not able to fully follow. So what is the basis for the appeal? What is it that there is it having to do with the flooding and the degree to which the flooding issues are properly addressed and they wanted something differently than what was recommended by the city? If somebody could please clarify?
I don't, I don't, I know it does have to do with the with the flooding. I don't believe that the appeal necessarily had to do with how we were approaching it. They just didn't feel that it was being approached. But they wanted something done, from my recollection, they wanted the city to mandate a correction before approving the construction project. But the reality is if we were to do that, that would delay our, it would delay what we're already trying to do. It would delay the remedy that they're actually seeking because we're going to deal with that as part of our construction.
That's, that's.
Madam Mayor, the the issue solely is, it seems like for the appeal is the drainage issue and it seems like the applicant has addressed it. Are those going to be conditions in the site plan and won't move forward until Engineering has approved and agreed? Yeah, so and and the appellant is is not here tonight. We have the letter as part of the record.
If I could add too, the applicant submitted a storm drain plan that was not a requirement in their conditions of approval. And so they're going, taking additional step to address that drainage issue that's not required as a condition of approval.
Okay, the questions, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to close?
We have another speaker, I think. No more speakers? Oh, no, okay, okay, we're going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, move adoption.
And I have a, I have a question. Okay, so so basically, the complaint about the flooding all have been addressed, meaning the applicant already, okay, correct the flooding, have a sump pump and they they worry for the next door neighbor is not going to exist anymore. Am I right?
The 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 issue is being addressed through the plan check process at the at the moment. There is a condition of approval requiring general grading plan check and drainage plan check. However, the council, if the council wants to specify that by changing or adding on to the condition of approval, the council does certainly have the authority to do so. However, it is getting addressed at the moment during the plan check.
So so basically, everything the city approved, including the applicant, they addressed the issue all have been fulfilled. Am I right? So meaning, what I'm saying is this, okay, let the complaint from the next door neighbor regarding the flood, this issue, okay, is already based on their construction and remodeling already has been addressed?
Yes, so through their seminals to the Engineering Department, the issue of drainage will be addressed through the precise grading plan, the onsite improvement plan and the storm drain plan that they're adding. And so it's one of the conditions that in the plan check that is there, one of the comments in the plan check for the storm drain is that they have to address non-functioning sump pump. So it's all going to be addressed in through those engineering permits.
I read it, okay, they not only have sump pump, they even have a drainage and going to go to sump plant, okay, sump pump into the front, okay, and go to the?
Detention basin.
Okay, go to the, okay, a stone wash, all that kind of thing. So basically, the next door neighbor concern based on the city and base of applicant all has been addressed, yes or no? The answer should be yes.
Yes, one ticket, their engineering approval, yes.
To get a yes, so difficult, just say yes, okay? So I move the motion to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission, okay, approval of the precise plan number 23-06.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Wu and a second by Councilman Contos.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilman Kontos to uphold the planning commission approval of precise plan number 23 dash 06. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes 4-0, Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine. Acting City Manager, do we have someone that will be presenting the report?
Yes, if you give us a second to change people. John from TransTech will be providing the report on the street sweeping.
Now it's on? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we are before you again tonight to present the street sweeping program evaluation. As you recall, on April 18, 2023, a little over six months ago, staff presented to the city council the condition and the status of its current street sweeping program, outlining steps to review the city's program comprehensively and also considering and evaluating alternative service delivery models. The report highlighted the need for reviewing street sweeping frequency. As you know, currently, we are doing it twice a month. Review the routes and schedules, existing street sweeping-related parking restrictions, and impacts of parked vehicles during designated street sweeping hours. At that meeting, the city council, after hearing the report, all members emphasized the need for a comprehensive outreach to the community to receive the community's input in order to bring back a report with those findings and that information and that input from the members of the community so that the decision regarding the street sweeping program could be made based on that information. Some of the comments that the council made at that night, again, was a comprehensive and robust outreach program using all avenues open to the staff, social media platforms, public service announcement, and et cetera. The council asked staff to look at exploring alternative routes and schedules, look at the parking restrictions and fees, and making sure that if there are any fees to be imposed, that they are going to, to be reasonable. Emphasis was to keep our streets and gutters clean and also use public education opportunities to tell members of the community about the city's efforts regarding stormwater management and clean water. And also, council members asked for dissemination of information. It was mentioned tonight, using our GIS platform. Based on that mandate, staff conducted four community meetings, starting in June of 2023. Before I go to the input that we received from those community meetings, for those members of the community who have not been a part of this discussion in the past, I would like to briefly explain the current program that we have in the city. The city is essentially divided into five street sweeping zones. Each zone gets swept on a particular day of the week. We have approximately 463 curb miles of streets. Two sides of the streets, we have roughly about 230 miles of roadways. Curb miles is considered both sides of the street. The city's downtown area gets swept twice a month, twice a week, beg your pardon, on Mondays and Fridays. And city-owned parking lots and civic centers' parking structure gets swept as well. For the residential streets, the current schedule that we have right now was established in 2015, the every-other-week sweeping program. Prior to that, the city streets were being swept every week. As far as the signage for prohibiting parking during street sweeping hours, only 7% of the city's streets are posted. And as you know, as it was indicated, enforcement cannot be done if parking prohibition signs are not in place. Majority of our residential streets are swept from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That's the, that's not all day. That's the window of time. Some streets get, portions of the street get swept between 7:00 to 10:30, and the rest get swept between 11:00, 11:30 to 3:00 o'clock. The way it is done right now, and maybe I should explain that. Let's assume the area that is being swept on a Monday. Almost half of that area gets swept on the first and third Monday of the month, and the other half of that area gets swept on the second and fourth Monday of the month. That's how we are currently doing it. As we have indicated previously, for the time being, the city is not enforcing parking restrictions as far as the street sweeping is concerned. This map that is shown again shows the five-day sweeping cycle. Starts on the northwest end of the, or west end of the city on Mondays, going to the north on Tuesdays, switching back to east Wednesday. And Thursday is a central section of the city, and finally moving to the southeast portion of the city that is being swept on Fridays. The red lines on this map indicates where we have currently street sweeping prohibition parking signs. Roughly about, as I mentioned, 7% of the city is covered. As I indicated, staff conducted four community meetings. The first one was held on June 12, 2023. Second one on June the 17th. Third one was June the 26th, and one was recently, on October 19th. And the reason there was a gap in between was that we were working on evaluating the program and potentially looking at weekly schedule and the impact of a weekly schedule, routes, alternate routes. Could some of the streets be swept? Alternate sides of the street be swept on alternate days? Evaluating those models. So there was some time, we wanted to gather that information and share it with the members of the community, which was done on October the 19th. And as it was mentioned by inner-city manager, staff also posted a survey citywide, which was between the 30th of October and was just closed last night at 5:00 PM. The next few slides are going to show you the results of the surveys for the first three meetings. And then the last one separated, and the reason that we separated the last one, the October one, was because the questions were a bit different than the first three ones. We got the input from the residents, and based on the input that we received from them, we redid, or succinctly redid, the questions to get a better cross-section of information from the members of the community. Question number one was, do you know your street sweeping day? That's important to know. Are people aware what time and day their streets are being swept? And about 70% responded, yes. The next best question, which we've talked about, the issue of parking and parking restrictions and the opportunity of folks to be able to park off-site on a street. We asked them, on your street sweeping day, would you be able to park your vehicles on your property? And 76% responded, yes, they could. Question number three, in your area on street sweeping day, is it generally easy to find parking if you have to move vehicles and park them on the street? Overwhelmingly, folks responded, again, yes, almost 75%, three quarters. Question number four was, how clean do you find your neighborhood streets in general? And it was a scale of 1, 2, 3, 1 being not clean, 2, 3 being very clean. And as you could see, about 40% were in the middle, and about, about 35% roughly found it very clean. 25%, they didn't find their streets to be clean. Question number five, how clean do you notice entirely the city streets, citywide? 45%, again, in between. 20, 20, 20% said not, not very clean, and about 35% found the street, beg your pardon, 35% found the city overall, city streets, not to be very clean. Question number six, are you satisfied with the current street sweeping schedule on your streets? 55% responded, yes. The next question was to address the overall, again, streets, city streets being clean. And as a resident, would they be open in order to keep the streets cleaner, in a better condition? Would they be open to increasing street sweeping program from bi-weekly, switching it to weekly? And 50% said, yes. 45% said, no. Question number eight, as explained previously, parked vehicles are an impediment to successful street sweeping during street sweeping hours. And they consider it to be the biggest challenge for an effective sweeping program. So in order to help ensure streets are accessible during street sweeping days, would you be amenable to a parking restriction program? Overwhelmingly, 75% responded, yes. As I indicated earlier, the results of the October 19th, the last community meeting that we had, is tabulated a little bit differently. It's in a bar chart instead of a pie chart. The questions were a bit different. So we have listed them in here for you. Question number one was, do you feel that increasing street sweeping will address the breeze and litter in the roadway? And I can see here that about roughly 63% said, yes. And as far as the second question, which was, do you think a revised routes will address the litter issue and debris in the roadway? About, again, 50% said, yes. Next question was sort of even. Do you think the revised routes will benefit the city overall as far as the city being cleaner? 40% stood sort of on the fence on this issue, and equal 47, 43% said, yes. The next question, are you satisfied with the current street sweeping schedule on your street? Overwhelmingly, people said they are satisfied. It works. Schedule are the hours, not necessarily the frequency. Question number five, parked vehicles during street sweeping hours are the biggest challenge. Again, an effective program requires parking restriction. Would you be open to parking restrictions? 56% again of the respondents said, yes, they will be. As indicated, we also had a citywide online survey. We expanded the range of the questions to capture, again, what we had asked before from the members of the community during those meetings, but also use their input in order to expand the questions to get a better cross-section of answers with regards to this matter. So the first question was, how would you rate the overall, again, the city as far as the city being clean? 24% found the city to be dirty. 32% were neutral on the issue. Equal number of folks said that the city, they found it, city streets generally, to be clean. Next question was, which one of the following factors are important to you regarding street sweeping service? This is, if you added the numbers, they don't add up to obviously more than 100 because it's a fragmented question, it's a complex question. One question includes many factors. So appearance of street sweepers, 19% said it's important. Availability during convenient hours, 13%. Effectiveness in removing debris, obviously is important to them. About 87%, they found, they want to find your streets clean after the sweeper has gone through. Frequency of sweeping, roughly about 49% is important. So they found some logic and reason to, as far as increasing the frequency and added streets being cleaner. And of course, overall, cleaning of this, clean condition of the streets, about 73%. Question number three, how often do you notice visible debris after street sweeping, when we heard some comments today, has taken place in your area? 19% said always. 27%, they find it often. Sometimes, 27%. Rarely, about 11%. And never, about 16%. The next question was, what improvements would you suggest for the street sweeping services in your area? And this was a general question. And we got a range of answers. But generally, people, responses included requesting the street sweeper not zigzag, quote unquote, through streets, drive slower. We, we heard a comment about that. And may, may I just add that, on the average, the street, the street sweeper travels around 5 to 8 miles an hour. If they go faster than that, they cannot clean. If they go slower than that, they cannot clean all the routes that they have to clean on a given day. So the most effective speed for them to be able to do their job safely is about 5 to 8 miles per hour. Use water. We found some folks to be both against and in favor of weekly street sweeping, a mixed, mixed result. Next question was, are you aware of any street sweeping schedule or notification system in your area? 57%, they said, no. 43%, they said, yes. And again, may I just mention that, in our city, like many other cities, street sweeping happens the day after trash pickup, actually. So some people are conditioned to that, the day after trash pickup, the street sweeping day. Question number six, do you feel that the street sweeping services are adequately addressing the neighborhoods as far as their overall streets, neighborhood being clean? 16% said always, yes. About 24% said most of the time, they found it. They find it to be true. 24% said sometimes. 16% so said not often enough. And about 19% found it not to be true at all. Question number seven, which areas in the city do you think should receive more attention from street sweeping services? The choice was between major streets, residential streets, and both major and residential streets. And about 62% of the folks in the city of West Covina, they want to address both arterios and residential streets. They want them to be cleaner. Question number eight, how would you rate the overall cleanliness of streets in your neighborhood? Again, this is a repeat question from the other surveys that we did with the community. And, you know, the, the folks that are either neutral on that position or find it clean is equal. Question number nine, how would you rate the overall cleanliness of streets through the city? 32% were, again, neutral, not necessarily a firm opinion. 32% found it clean, and 24% found overall city streets not being clean. And again, we just had a general question. And again, we just had a general question about comments that folks could make. You know, it was, I read them, I read them last night. There were about a hundred different responses on a wide range of issues, mostly policy issues, not necessarily related to street sweeping. Now, feedback from the community. Council members and those who attended, the mayor and councilmember, councilors who attended the meetings, and councilmembers who were present at the, all councilmembers were present on the April eighteenth meeting, emphasized greatly on sharing the results of those meetings with the members of the city council when we come back. And we are doing that tonight. So here is a range of highlights of the range of input that we received, and following these two or three slides, we have a comprehensive list of all the issues that was raised by the members of the community. So, this were some comments that we received. Why expand a street sweeping program while there are more important priorities that need to be addressed? Again, a general policy question. Some said that they would support a weekly sweeping program, but the process needs to be transparent. Public input is important. Then there was another comment or a question that was made at one of the meetings, I think it was the last meeting, how is a successful street sweeping program measured? What is a successful program? Could it be defined? And the answer to that is, yes. There are matrices and factors that could be used, elaborate evaluation of a successful program, but that was not the scope of what we were trying to do here. There was a comment made, one of the speakers that was also present tonight, that the new, the program rollout is opaque. The community must be involved in making major decisions regarding the street sweeping program. The number of residents who are participating in the community outreach meetings are limited. There were about, average of nine to twelve who participated, albeit that it was posted, and we tried to reach out to a larger audience, but regretfully, we were not successful. So, there are limited surveys taken from a few residents who participate is not reflective of the opinion of the entire city, obviously. In fact, overall and in general, every resident in West Covina favors expansion of street sweeping, but for residents who are involved with the city, the concern is why expanding street sweeping while the city has other priorities? Not all residents have off-street parking. We are allowing ADUs which do not require onsite parking, but want to prohibit off-site street parking. Don't want parking restrictions in front of my house. There is no issue which requires an all-in-one solution. If you are in compliance, why do we need to go from a bi-weekly schedule to a weekly one? You heard that tonight as well. Twice a month, street sweeping is adequate. Why is the city considering changing the program, whereas most of the neighborhood, there are no, I beg your pardon, where in most of the neighborhoods, there are no parking issues during street sweeping hours? The problem is multifamily residential neighborhoods. Another comment was, agree that there are areas in the city where cars are parked all the time and trash gets collected under and around the parked cars. We have a problem with parked cars in our neighborhood, support parking enforcement. We have a street parking problem, which prevents the sweepers from cleaning our streets. Parking restriction is a good idea. And we got some bullet points of additional comments that we received. Why is the city considering a parking restriction program? If you want, I can go through them, but if you choose, I can stop right here. We get, yeah, we get the general idea that all comments were incorporated in this presentation and were taken and studied. So, what we have before you tonight are two options. One is, and let me share with the city council, when I was going through this, and I'm gonna make it quick. It just occurred to me that there was a lot of comments that we've heard overall in these meetings, from the members of the community, about a rollout of a weekly program, and all the complexities that it's gonna bring about if we ever did that. And I reminded myself, well, the city of West Covina prior to 2015 was being swept weekly. And, you know, I spoke with the operator, and I said, did you really experience any issues as far as parking restrictions are concerned, as far as effective sweeping? And the response that I got was, it was a very successful and complete street sweeping program that we had on a weekly basis prior to 2015. As you recall, the only reason that the city cut back was because of budgetary concerns at the time. So, you know, it just downed on me that necessarily, we don't have to face a lot of complex issues. All the cities that have a successful program, they also have a successful street sweeping, parking enforcement program. And the operator reminded me, he said, John, the city had signs throughout the city, and when we went into a bi-weekly program, we had to take them down, obviously, because they were not applicable anymore. So, I just wanted to share this with you, because I was thinking about this, analyzing it, and, you know, anyways, that's a thought. Implementation of a complete street sweeping parking restriction enforcement, and the details of that is outlined in your report, and the costs associated with that option. And the second option before the city council tonight is increasing frequency of the current program from bi-monthly to weekly.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wu.
Yeah, okay. I live in West Covina since nineteen eighty-nine, and I remember, I live on two-three-five South Leaf, West Covina, between Azusa and Lake Allen, okay, on the Stewart and Cross Street Leaf. And I remember, it's weekly, it's always weekly street sweeping, and my street, and I move my car when the sweeper is coming, so I need to remember, okay, and because I want, okay, my street and my car, I live on the corner a lot, so I want my car a lot, because otherwise, because the kids go through, they walk around, and they trash, they dump littering and this and that, okay? And since 2015 become a bi-weekly, I don't even know when we can see the sweeper. I barely can see them at all, okay? And then my street, I live on the Coté, my street is filthy, and you go to Baranca, and when I walk, okay, and the south side and all the places, and especially like Baranca, and you can see the debris on the street, it's really bad. And I talk to so many residents, everybody complained about our street is really filthy. And especially, you have a car parking over there, Santos, okay, and Valley View, and then, there's no way the street sweeper can sweep the area. So you can see debris and this and that. Then we have to have our public work staff to go to clean it manually. Their job is not janitor to clean the street, that should be done by the street sweeping, okay? And so, and the old, older city is weekly, okay? And keep the stone drained and clean and all that kind of thing, and make sure people move their car. And I was living in the dense area in, from nineteen eighteen, eighteen ninety, two thousand three, and I remember, this is fourteen years. I remember how I moved my car and this and that. So, I think this is to make sure, our promise to make sure our city clean, beautiful, and this is not, it's not going to general fund, right? Okay, all this? So that my question.
Correct, it's not a general fund, so it's restricted funds, measure R.
So this is major R, major M money, so we are doing this. Couple issue is this, if we're going to go to weekly, we want to make sure the street sweeping company, they have to do slowly, five to eight mile. Second thing, they need to use water, they really need to clean it, okay? And we want to make sure our street really need to be clean. If you go to walk around, it's really filthy, okay? And it's really, it's not represent West Covina, and it's not represent our city living in the safe and healthy neighborhood. So I think we should go back to prior 2015, weekly after trash, okay, collect, and all the debris on the street, and street sweeping coming in, and you move your car, maybe for a couple hours. Second thing is regarding the sign, we need to, I remember before, we all have a sign, okay, and now sign being removed, what's a waste of money, okay, in 2015? And now we have to put it back. How, what a redundant for that. And that's a restricted fund, it's not even general fund. Why they kept a cut? Okay, so, anyway, and I think we should need to bring the sign, but the sign is not whole day, it should be a period of how many hours, okay, when they coming to, okay? You cannot put a, I'm going to your home to fix your plumbing, and I give you the inner window is whole day, and you have to, they're stuck for whole day. No, I think it should be a certain hour in the morning, okay, and eight to twelve or something, three or four hours, I think it's correct. It doesn't need whole day for people to, cannot park their car back. So we not try to stop people park their car in front of their home, we just let us to clean the street, and then after they done, move your car back, like what I did for fourteen years on two-three-five leaf. So anyway, and this is my request, okay, one is the sign, we put it back, okay, and the sign should be in the certain period of time, rather than the whole day, and it should be in the morning, should be afternoon, we should, no, they should tell us. And we need to have a contract monitor to see what they do their job, okay? And make sure they collect all the debris, otherwise, why we pay them additional, and they're weekly, and they don't pick up the dirt, they don't pick up the trash? So we need to have our superintendent maybe follow through the sweeper, okay, and see what they doing, and, okay, write it down, to make sure accountability and responsibility for them to do weekly. I think our intention now is try to keep a beautiful and clean city for our resident, and not going to use our general fund. So I'm all for it, okay, because I live here for a long time, I remember the good old time, the street is clean, our sidewalk is clean, but right now, it's just like, okay, it's, we need to improve ourselves. So this is my comment.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Loma, Seattle?
Yes, so I lived in the city prior to 2015, and I didn't, I've never remembered having a sign or a weekly street cleaner that came through, let alone when it happened to have every two weeks. I mean, it was very rare. I have personally seen them drive, when I do see them, I have seen them drive more than five to eight miles per hour. And in regards to residents asking about, you know, the signage, and I think it's more the enforcement, because on our street, we have new neighbors moving in, they don't know when it's street sweeping, one, and two, if their cars are there, all the street sweeper does is just go around it, and I think maybe that's why they're just speeding up, which I have seen the debris spread. So they, like, when I see the survey, them stating that, you know, almost fifty percent, or like a high percentage of residents don't see it being properly cleaned, I would have to agree, because when they are not using water, when they are going quick, it does spread the debris. It does not pick up, and it doesn't, it's not doing the purpose that it's supposed to. My thing with the weekly cleaning, though, is the hassle of having to move your car the same day, moving from the other side to the other side on the exact same day, so, I don't know if you had a, you had an answer to that?
Are you talking about the areas with higher density, like next to the multifamily homes?
Exactly, or just in general, because the bi-weekly, I understand, okay, this week you park here, next week you park there, you just move it versus the same day that...
So for those areas, and John can correct me, it wouldn't be same day, different timeframes, it would be alternating days. So on one day, we would do one side of the street in those higher-density areas, and on another day, we do the other side of the street.
And even without the high-density areas, to have it, it's gonna be same day, so they're not able to park, is that gonna be an issue?
I will let John answer that.
Especially with all these new ADUs coming in place, and all these buildings and so forth, so I'd like to know that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may. As far as the acting city manager mentioned, as far as the high-density neighborhoods, apartments, complexes, and condos, it was evaluated, it was, that factor was evaluated as part of devising the new route for a weekly. So, one side of the street is going to be one day, and the other side is going to be a different day of the week. So folks can move their cars from one side of the street to the other side, to allow the sweeper to go by. As far as the entire city is concerned, that question was raised, we mulled over that. First of all, no one is doing it, citywide, and the reason that folks are not doing it because it increases, not only it increases the cost of the operation, roughly around forty, forty-five percent, but the problem, the bigger problem, is that it's gonna run into the trash pickup schedule, it's gonna have a conflict with that. So doing an alternate side of the street throughout the city, alternate days, alternate side, is not really a practical solution. Because it's gonna have a direct conflict with trash pickup.
But you're saying alternate days of the same week, but if you do bi-weekly, it doesn't, it doesn't have any bearing, or it doesn't have any effect on that, correct? Because it'd be, like you mentioned, if your trash day, like my trash day is on Friday, so Monday, it would be street sweeping, so if it's first and third, and then the other side of the street would be, on the same street, obviously, it would be like second and fourth, correct?
Right. So, rather than having a weekly scheduled alternate sides and alternate days, we're talking about the current system that we have, bi-weekly, but change it to alternate days for different sides of the street.
Yes.
It's gonna be a cost increase, about thirty-five to forty percent of the sweeping operation. Because the sweeper, when you, when the sweeper goes by and does the entire street in one day, in one, in one take, in one sweep, no pun intended, it's a much more effective way of doing it, rather than coming back to the same street on a different day and sweeping the other half every other week.
So the current system that we have, because when I see the street sweeper, I don't even see the street sweeper sweeping the other side of the street. Me personally, I haven't seen, I've seen them sweep my side in the mornings, Monday mornings, but I've never seen them sweep the other side unless they're at a different day. So are you saying currently, the system we have right now, it's bi-weekly, and it cleans both sides of the street that same day?
It do, perhaps, maybe I can explain it this way, and I know a representative...
Microphone.
...the company is here nationwide to explain it better, they are the operators, but they go in one direction throughout the neighborhood, one side of the street, and remember, we have a window of seven o'clock to three o'clock. They go around in the neighborhood on one side, let's say the east side, for all intents and purposes, and they come around on the second part of the scheduled sweeping, which is, let's say, from eleven to three, and sweep the other side. So perhaps you noticed it in the morning, sweeping your side of the street, you didn't see them doing the other side because they came back later. So they take around a loop, sort of a route, in order to complete what they do in one day. That's why the window of sweeping is from seven to three. Because they don't take one street, one individual street, go one side, turn, and come back and do the other.
We have a nationwide rep here.
I believe he was here, let me, if you allow me one minute, I will go and find...
Maybe she can answer.
Hard questions.
Correct. And we need...
And there, I see, if I knew what day my street sweeping was, and there are some Mondays where I had to stay home, I mean, like, literally, throughout my years here, there's some days I stayed home Monday all day, and I have not seen, I mean, either I don't see anybody come in, and I'd only see one side, so...
So that would be part of the reason that we would put up signage on the streets, so that people would be aware, and then we'd also put it on that GIS map, that on the city website, so as a new person coming into the city, a new homeowner or a new resident can come in and check on the website.
I think that I...
And I personally do not like the seven AM, because we have a lot of working parents. If high school now starts at eight-thirty, I mean, if they're leaving, I don't want it to burden and put another stress load on parents or anybody who has to go to work.
I think the design is, if the trash day, for example, my trash day Tuesday, and then I will pick up the trash at nighttime, at Tuesday night, and I will move my car, because next day, it's gonna be sweeping. next day it's gonna be sweeping, okay? But don't know it's morning and the noon, but I will move my car at the nighttime. That's what I remember at the two, two, three, five leave. So, so it's always next to the trash day, they have a street sweeping to clean your street due to when they pick up the trash and they, they leave a lot of debris on the street. So anyway, but we need to listen to nationwide, what they answered to your question. I'm curious too, how they make the streets cleaner, otherwise, if we wanted them to weekly and they still do another good job, then it's a waste of money.
Yeah, and plus, I mean, literally from 7 to 3, are they able to really complete the whole route coming back? I mean, that's probably one, maybe my street's the last one and they just-
I think there's 7 to, 7 to something is one, one, one street, okay, and another street is a certain time, I, I think-
He just said 7 to 3 for the whole entire block.
If I may, um, so the new proposed routes would be from 7, the first portion of it would be from 7:00 AM to noon, and then the second portion of that would be 11, uh, PM to 4:00 PM?
11:00 AM.
Sorry, yes, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So I don't know if we, if, if we move the 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, if that then pushes back the afternoon shift to 5:00 PM, um, in order to get those streets covered, but I'll-
Is nationwide here?
Uh, no, unfortunately. I, I spoke with them over the phone and it confirmed the information that I shared with you, that they take a street and they go in one particular direction and they come around and do the other side of the street and second part of it, they-
Um, I want to move the motion to continue.
Yeah.
Okay, we cannot make a decision without the nationwide rep over here.
Exactly.
This is a major improve, major increase from 100%, so in that way, we cannot get the answer, how can we make a decision? So I want to-
And I want accountability because obviously, they're not even doing a good, there are current, current street sweeper currently, right?
So move the motion to continue, uh, for we request nationwide have to be here to answer our question, otherwise, we're not going to make decision based on, we are guessing over here.
Right.
So anyway, this is my motion.
I second.
Madam Mayor, just, just real quick as a question, just to put on the table for when they're here or when they stay, um, i- if they have, uh, any plans or any, any approach for really high density multifamily areas, like on Westport, they're just, there's no parking, I mean, and so we just need to factor that in. I realize, uh, that what John said about 2015 where there wasn't a problem then, but there weren't as many ADUs then, there wasn't as much density then, so I just, they need to come back and explain how they will address that in a way that doesn't overburden residents with nowhere to park. But at the same time, the streets need to be cleaned, so with that, I, I support the motion though.
Um, thank you. Okay, I, and I want to follow up and, okay, regarding, regarding the ADU and this, uh, we didn't allow the ADU, state wants to build ADU, okay, and the people, if they don't have a parking, they have to really move the car because we need to clean the street. Uh, we cannot just because the street and they, they can just park right there, and you know, some car park over there for months, they're not moving, okay? It's very difficult for this, for the city and the city staff have continued to clean those street many, many times, and we've been requested, and this public work staff been continue be agenda to clean the street, manually sweep the street, okay, the debris is really bad, okay, just Santos-
Garvey.
Okay, uh, okay, exactly, Garvey and the Park View and the, uh, Valley View, it's, it's all very problematic. We, the city has a lot of problematic area and the what, as a council, we want to address the area, we cannot just because we allowed them to build ADU and then, okay, we, we just let go and the street can be filthy. And I think we have to find a solution, how can we clean those street? And really, as people say, please move your car, we are going to sweep the street once a week, move your car, okay? And you cannot have a car and they put a cover and the, the flat tire and the parking on the, all street forever and ever, yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, a- and regards to when I said, um, bi-weekly, um, and you, I know you've mentioned that the cost will increase, but I, I want to see what the cost is because, I mean, if they are doing it weekly but doing less, but they are doing, um, street sides bi-weekly, I mean, I don't see how much the cost can be of increase. But, um, the other, uh, question, I mean, the answer to some of the residents when they, when they say, oh, the street sweeping is low priority or, or it's not important, well, it serves to purpose and I just want to remind the residents that with the street sweeping, it keeps our city beautiful, clean, and, um, and it does address safety concerns because with vehicles there that shouldn't be there or vehicles that are just, you know, pretty much abandoned, it gets addressed, um, quicker than having residents, having to keep calling code enforcement for this vehicle that's there. So it does address cleanliness, beautification and safety, so I just wanted to put that out there, but, um, that's all, and yes, moving forward to tabling this.
All the question.
Mm-hmm. I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilman Contos, is that correct? Or, uh, um, excuse me, Councilwoman Lopez Viado to continue the item. Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes for zero, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward. No meetings to report, and, um, does anyone have a mother may I or any comments they'd like to say?
I do.
Councilwoman?
You know, in, in reference to, I know, uh, the frustration that residents feel in the state of California, I, uh, share your sentiments, I know, I, you know, we had a accident that occurred, um, you know, my son's, uh, friends that were involved in an accident, I wanted to ta- thank, uh, police and fire. The person who hit them was drinking her bottle, um, still, and I know they, they forwarded on social media, but, you know, uh, the nerve, of course, uh, drinking after hitting without showing any remorse or concern for the safety of the others, uh, you know, minors or the, the youths that was hit on the vehicle, um, and, you know, I know certain laws, it gets frustrating whether they have passed DUIs or anything of that sort, uh, I just wanted to put out there, that person is not a West Covina resident. And my other issue was, I know, you know, as, as that occurred, that, that car that hit a, well, um, that hit them, of course, engulfed in fire and it flamed up, and that's why fire had to go because, um, police, fire extinguisher didn't work, so, uh, because the fire was strong, so, uh, fire had to come and remove that. So we had two of those issues and, um, but I wanted to thank them both, uh, and then also, there's a few other things, um, you know, I can't even remember, sorry, it's just, it's been a long night, it's been an interesting weekend, um, but, you know, just a few concerns, like, oh, yeah, now I want, I never remembered what I wanted to say, because I know on that video that they showed, yes, that was me screaming at somebody, this jerk who just goes, uh, next to the car and tells, uh, the V, tells us, pretty much, he goes, move that beep, F-beep, you know, all this, while passing by, and, um, you know, it, it's just, it's sad, I mean, these are, I don't know if that person passing by is a West Covina resident, but I hope that residents understand, I mean, first, yes, they should have, you know, are you guys okay or something? I mean, obviously, if it, it wasn't a fender bender, it's a major crash accident, um, so, you know, the, the sympathy or, or, not even sympathy, but the, just the courteous, because I'm pretty sure that if it was one of them into that accident, they wouldn't, uh, they wouldn't enjoy or feel, they wouldn't feel good about having anybody telling them to move and stuff. So, I mean, if you do see that, obviously, you know, if, if you are, you don't have to egg it on, um, if you can help, help. Uh, there are some people who get into an accident, and I just remembered me getting into a, a major car accident on the freeway, and you still have people yelling. I would move if I can, if my car was able to, but obviously, it was not able to, and in that situation, it engulfed in flames, so, um, just, you know-
Come out and push.
Hmm? Yeah, come out and help push or, or do something about it, so, um, just, you know, I know there has been accidents almost every single day, um, so I just ask and I urge everyone to please be careful, um, drive safe, you know, stay off your phones or don't drink and drive, or in this case, don't even continue drinking while you're, uh, in an accident, but just, you know, if you can just be courteous to everybody out there, if you can help instead of being the issue of just screaming, yelling wasn't, you know, that was not cool, it didn't help anything at all, but, uh, again, thank you PD and fire for, uh, helping with that situation there. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wu?
Supposedly, I just want to go home, but I have to say something. Tonight is the last meeting for our Mayor Diaz. Okay, next meeting, we are going to do the reorganization.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not the formal business, so, but tonight, you are, this is the last formal business, but I just want to say this, you, you impress me, okay, meaning, uh, first I say, oh, can you, can she do it? Can, okay, and, and I, and I end up saying, holy micro, she's doing better than me, okay? So, so you're doing great job, okay, as, as a mayor and, uh, you, we, we have to take other heat, but we have to make a decision, okay? Nothing we can do, but, uh, you sit over here, you bite the bullet and, uh, you got this one years, I, I know you, you don't want to get off, but, okay, but because you finally you get used to it and you have to say goodbye, okay? But, but, but again, thank you so much for your service for this one years, and you are magnificent mayor and centennial mayor, and, uh, we are very proud of you, but thank you for your service.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Councilman Contos?
Um, as, as Madam Mayor, as a quick mother may I, and, and to memorialize for the public, um, I'd like to ask that we had, we look at graffiti abatement, uh, strategies. Um, I know our staff is doing the best they can with, with what they have now, but I, I also wanted to, uh, ask that we formally ask staff to look at different strategies to make sure there's better color matching, to make sure to, to see if we could pool our money, our businesses can pool their money together to buy paint to cover the graffiti, I mean, just a lot of different strategies, but just if that could be just formally committed or, or, uh, sent to, to staff for, for action, uh, for, to look at different strategies, I'd, I'd be grateful.
Do we have a-
Well, I actually, in, in reference to Councilman Contos, um, was it last year? I believe it was last year when, um, the mayor and I actually gra- uh, painted-
Graffiti?
Graffiti, well-
Oh.
We removed all the graffiti at the skate park.
Escape park.
And then, uh, because of that, I remember requesting for a mother may I request on the whole, uh, looking over our whole, uh, graffiti proposal, because there were certain things that when residents got hit, um, obviously, it's, it's on city, I mean, it's on private property, there was, uh, an issue where a city says, oh, well, we don't take care of it, but residents who don't have the money or having some issue, because I did put in a request to make sure that there was, um, paint available that the residents possibly take to kind of cover their, their area if they needed that and, um, and to look at other, uh, graffiti, um, issues, because I do remember having to, and I guess we got a push again, because we wanted to reward those who, um, reported the graffiti, because I remember I did before, I followed that person in and I, I called it in and I waited to PD getting, um, catch them and stuffs, and I never got the reward, by the way.
You didn't get a hundred dollars?
Huh?
You didn't get a hundred dollars?
No, I didn't get a, they didn't even offer to me that, uh, prior, and I didn't even know about that when I first got into council, but then I did push for that because, uh, we want to make sure that those people, um, who graffitied, you know, they, they get caught, even though I know our laws suck, they're just released, but I also asked, um, if we can look into when, if they do that, that those offenders paint our city. I know back in the days, they used to have that with-
Community service.
Trans, community service. So I, I know when I put in a council request, it addresses everything as a whole, um, so I, I, and then we just never followed up on that, so, yes, I mean, I, I do agree with you, Councilman Contos.
I want to-
Wanted to get that going and check it out.
I want to clarify, your mother may I regarding you graffiti abatement, uh, your strategy, what you want to achieve, or what kind of more kind of solid, maybe you can-
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, to basically have, uh, uh, increase the quality of graffiti abatement, our folks are fast and they're really good at covering up the graffiti, but let's say there's gray on red, it looks horrible, um, from what I understand.
Got it, he's a, uh, okay, match, uh, pen, okay, color match.
And, and plus, uh, makes also an ability to, to take pictures of the graffiti to feed it to our law enforcement, so that way, when there are people who go across jurisdictions, we'll be able to feed information there, uh, so, and that exists, that technology already, an approach already exists. And the other thing has to do with geo-targeting to make sure that whoever we, we retain, if we do that, that, that they stay within the city and they address graffiti within the city.
So you want the staff, okay, and the person first, okay, and do the, uh, clean up, they need to try to do the color match, the second thing is take a pictures, uh, to try to see what we can, based on this being, we attack again, again, he can tell the PDs, maybe we need to patrol here more often, that is what your suggestion?
Yes.
Can, can we combine ours? I know I've said that last year and, and Councilman Contos is enhancing others. Um, I know, especially now that there's increase of like gang affiliated graffiti, which needs to be removed ASAP, um, but I'm not sure, I, I know prior that the police tracks it or if they, I don't know if they continue to keep those pictures to track it and make sure that, um, if it's, you know, a certain gang that it's related, that they are able to put that, um, together, but, uh, I know I made mine prior and Councilman Contos-
Okay.
-fending that, if we can tag team on that.
So we have this combination and I second.
Um, I have a question though. Councilman Contos, um, are you looking for contractors or are you looking for our staff to do this work?
That's what would require further discussion because it's a, we have to be cost-effective.
Okay.
We also should be, we, it should be a, an effective solution, whether it's contractors or whether we are more staff with, with what they need, I, I don't know what that answers, but that's why we should have further-
That's clear, okay. And I have two mother may Is.
We can vote on that, mother may I.
Oh, let's do that.
Yes, so I have a motion by Councilman Contos, a second by Councilman Wu to, um, direct staff to look at graffiti abatement strategies to increase the quality of graffiti abatement, such as better cu- color matching, taking pictures of the graffiti and geo-tagging, as well as have the person who was caught tagging cover up the graffiti.
But, uh, can you also, um, include mine, my previous mother may I with his to-
If I can clarify yours, um, you wanted to do, um, paint, provide paint for residents, uh, reward program for reporters, and then, um, what kind of services or consequences for offenders if they can paint the area that they graffitied? Um, if I could, yes, we'll add that.
And a really quick, I think we already approve, okay, reward, okay?
Yeah, we, we, we made the reward, but-
Award, we-
The reward is set.
In the fire, firework, graffiti, we all approve both.
And we can, uh, promote it.
Promote it, it's not promoted, it's, it's been forgotten.
Okay.
Accepted as friendly amendment.
Yes.
Couts, uh, so I'm just gonna call for a vote, Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Thank you. Item passes for zero, Mayor.
Okay, good. Okay, um, I don't know if we've all noticed, but we have this DJ that is just magnificent, that we use at every, every event, and, um, what I wanted to do, um, during my mayorship is proclaim, uh, make a proclamation so that we, um, identify DJ Phil, what's his last name?
We just go DJ Phil.
That's all we call him, right? Um, as the voice of West Covina, because, um, he is the voice of West Covina, whenever we have these events, it's like, oh, is he here? It's Phil! So I want to do that, um, I want, that's what I want to do, so.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I have no problem, the only worry I have, other DJ might be jealous.
Well, you know what, on, on my defense, because I've, I've dealt with both DJs, but, um, DJ Phil has been reliable, he's been there, uh, very positive, um, and we don't have that many DJs in the city, but he is, he represents West Covina to the highest level.
Next time city hire him, he must get some discount. All this glory and all this-
The title.
Yeah, exactly.
DJ Phil, the voice of West Covina.
Yeah, DJ Phil discount.
So I have a motion by Mayor Diaz and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado to recognize DJ Phil as the voice of West Covina through a proclamation.
Yes.
Councilman Contos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Uh, let me think about this.
Stay in then.
Uh, aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Definitely aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes for zero, Mayor.
The next thing is, um, during Arbor Day, we planted, or the city planted, um, several crepe myrtles, and, um, I would like to, uh, would it be proclaim or make it so that we have the crepe myrtle as the city tree? We do that? That's my mother may I.
Okay.
So can we do that?
Yeah, we just need a motion, yeah.
Anyone second it?
So, so this is a mother may I to look into what trees that?
The crepe myrtle.
Crepe myrtle? I have no idea.
I know, I don't even know how it looks.
Planted several crepe myrtles all over the medians.
So, so we look into it, but it doesn't mean we approve that you have it. But just bring back to us.
Because I believe the history, like we know that the city of West Covina is what the flower is.
Lily of the Nile.
Lily, yeah, Lily and Nile, but I don't know if the history of the trees are what the trees, but they'll be looking into.
I, I want to, I want to have a second thought about black cherry, or black walnut.
We don't have any.
I, I think I'm the East Coast.
We don't have any of those. So yes, can, can we do that?
Do we have a motion in a second?
I had a motion by Mayor Diaz and a second by Councilman Wu, was that correct?
I didn't second, I want my black cherry, black cherry, no, black walnut.
It's, it's a second to look into the.
But I need, right, to look into it. The second was made by Councilman Wu, correct?
We just look into the tree, right?
Yes, I'm just trying to record.
Okay, okay. Okay.
By Councilman Wu to direct staff to look into proclaiming.
Look into making the crepe myrtle the city tree.
Yes, to, to direct staff to look into proclaiming the crepe myrtle as the tree for the city of West Covina.
I can ask, I don't even know what the tree look like.
It's very beautiful.
But I mean, you'd have to have the history at least.
Okay, just for your last day as a mayor, I say yes, second.
Thank you.
Councilman Contos?
Keeping track of.
Aye.
Councilman Wu? I'm taking role.
Did you, what did you say?
He said yes.
Are you sure? Okay, uh, aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado? Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes four zero to direct staff into looking into it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Contos?
Just really wanted to thank you, this is your last full meeting. I have really, really enjoyed working with you in your mayor, during your mayorialty. And I'm going to save a lot of my speech for the next meeting. But I really want to say publicly how much I have enjoyed working with you in this capacity, how we're going to continue working together.
Yes, absolutely.
You've been an incredible leader, you really have, and, and on multiple fronts. And I'm, I'm just really feel privileged to have worked with you as mayor. And you're my first mayor during my first term. Thank you.
I, I want to follow Councilman Kento because, okay, I don't want to say anything, but since he say, I remember two of you are coupled together. You two of you are driving all the places, check all the area, okay?
Yes, we do.
You're like a partner, you're like a dating, okay? What I'm saying, you guys are really dedicated to your job. I'm, I'm not kidding, I'm serious. You guys are really driving around and find a problem, this and that, okay? So when people say we are doing anything, no, you guys are really spend your own private time checking the city and looking for some of the issue.
Late in the evening.
Yes, and, and the weekend too.
And the weekend, weekend.
So in that way, you guys are unbelievable, dedicated, try to improve our city, make our West Covina beautiful. But thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something too, and I'll save the rest, but I just, you know, the year goes by so quick and as soon as you get to the groove of things and you've gotten so much better and improved and it's like, time to go. And I'm like, oh, but, yeah, but you did a great job, thank you. And you know, like some people say, oh, you don't do much. But you, I know you did your, that ride along and you went, you know, with the police ride along and you've been involved and it's, we do a lot of things that people don't see or you don't brag or you don't show or tell, but we know, and so, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, it was my pleasure, I love it. It's not my last day, come on. We're not breaking up yet. But I have something to say, I have something else to say. For those that think that events that we have at, in the city are not important, let me tell you something, it's very important. It's important for our community to have a place to go and enjoy and have a good time and have a positive day. And so for those of you that don't think it's a good idea for us to have events, it's very important. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
I just wanted to add to that, it is very important. It is a mental health benefit.
Yes.
To unite people, the social gatherings and it, it does more good than harm and it has more positive benefits and impact on that. So yes, I agree. And to tell you the truth, when I attend these events and I talk to people, they appreciate it. They look forward to it. I had one resident who compared us to another city, local city, that, you know, they have more events and how come West Covina doesn't? And so she's actually happy to see that it's coming along. And thank you Roxanne, you rock, you and your group does fabulous events and we appreciate that. So yes, thank you.
Again, okay, I want to go home, but I still cannot stop talking. But the event is so important, okay? The, the event, you see how many happy family. Look at how they happy to be there and they say, I'm, I want to thank city and all the people put this together because they unite us. They unite people together, they're over there, see the performance by all different group and all the children perform, very proud to represent their culture. This is what West Covina about. United and people are whining about how this is not important, this and that. A lot of them is come from, okay, community sponsorship, not even coming from the city at all. It's all the donation and put it together, spend time, okay? And not even, okay, and to get paid and try to put a good stuff for the city. Most of the performance over there, now they get paid. But they all dress up, they all proud to represent West Covina and all the, all the, and gifted all the encouragement. And that is how West Covina about, united for our family, for our children to be proud living in this city.
Sorry, this may be bashing, but the people who do say that, they're probably lonely. I, you know, it's just, it's, it's hard, bitter, yeah.
I would say for those that don't think we should have these events, I would suggest you attend and maybe it'll bring a smile to your face. That would be really nice, so. Good night, everyone, thank you.